And once we start the meeting, Roger, I will not be able to rename people because it takes.
Right, that's fine. Basically, as long as you've got all the board members' names, the other people you can just catch us in the minutes, but if they speak.
Okay. I'm ready and I started the recording.
Okay. So I call the August 11th, 2020, meeting of the Newton Planning Board to order. As Chair of the Newton Planning Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, and most recently extended by Executive Order 2020-16, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting telephonically or by using the Zoom website. As we previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the town website. If there, if anyone has a problem, they should email the Planning Board Office at planningboard@newtonnh.com. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be rescheduled and adjourned. Please note that all votes will be taken during the meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Also, in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 23 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, and most recently extended by Executive Order 2020-16, the Planning Board is relieved from the statutory and local requirements on particular schedule or a certain number of times within a given timeframe. The Planning Board is also relieved from complying with statutory and local deadlines for accepting, hearing, and acting on Planning Board applications. Note, as an attendee at the meeting, your microphone and our phone will be muted. The Board Chair will specify when public comment period is open for an application. Town staff will be in attendance at the meeting and manage the public comment process. If you are participating online with the Zoom program, click on the hand icon at the bottom of the screen. This will raise your hand so that the moderator knows you wish to speak. If you are participating by phone, press star nine. This will indicate to the moderator that you wish to speak. When it is your turn, and let you know and share your comments. When speaking during the meeting, please announce your name so the administrative assistant can know who is speaking as he takes the minutes. This time I'd ask the administrative assistant to call the role of the members and alternates.
Please state if you're present and if you're alone. Mr. Hamel.
Present and alone.
Ms. Estabrock.
Present and alone.
Ms. Collier. I know she was here.
Sorry, I had to unmute. I am present and Jim Baker is here and in and out of the room.
Mr. Foote.
I'm present, alone, but again, it's a public meeting. It doesn't matter.
Mr. White.
I am here, but I'm not alone.
Mr. Andrews.
Present and alone.
Mr. Kronlick.
Present and alone.
Ms. Allen.
Present and alone.
Ms. White.
Present and not alone.
Mr. Forza, are you here? Mrs. Forza, if you're here, would you please raise your hand? Okay, nobody is raising their hand. Mr. Zott. If you're here, please raise your hand. Nobody has raised their hand. Mr. Zalinski.
Present and alone.
Okay. I'm James Doggett, the Planning Board Administrative Assistant, and Ms. Rowden is also here.
Correct.
Roll has been called, Mr. Chairman, and you have a quorum.
Yeah, actually, so all of the regular members are.
Are present.
Present. So we don't need any alternates voting at this time.
Right.
Okay. The first item on the agenda is 125 Development. A request for a public hearing on a full lot subdivision at Six Puzzle Lane. Property is referenced as tax map 14, block one, lot 27-3. At this time, I will recuse myself from both this and the next item and ask the Vice Chair to chair these two applications.
Thank you, Roger. It's me again.
Vice Chair, I have, this is Mike Andrews.
Hi, Mike.
Just before we open the official public hearing on this, I just have a quick question or statement I need to make real quick. And this, it's a little bit awkward, but it, I first started thinking about this after we, we received a couple of letters. And really, I just want to have this question asked so it's on the record. And I'm going to direct this just to the Vice Chair and you can take it from there. At first, kind of was a warning flag when we got that apology letter from, from Jace, and I noticed that it had come through Annie. And my, I, I know there are some other, maybe organizational contacts between the applicant and her. I don't know enough about that and it's really none of my business. The question I need to ask, just to have it on record, is are there other meetings or, or communications going on between any Board members and the applicant? And if so, should there be a, a request to recuse themselves from these, from these hearings? And that over to you, Vice Chair.
Gee, thanks. That was a whopper.
Crap.
Well, I did, I've been, I've been on this radio before, and if, if the sooner the question is asked, the less problems it can be in the long run.
Correct. Um, so I have, I'm not aware of an apology letter. Did that come through? Like, I'm not really good about reading my emails. So I'm not really sure what apology letter you're talking about.
Uh, it was a letter from Jace addressed to the Board. I could dig it out here. It was after a couple of meetings ago, things got a little bit heated. And it was a very well worded apology letter, just talking about, you know, some of the reasons the emotions were high and, and all that. And it wasn't the letter pertaining that piqued my interest. It was just when I looked back at it and looked at the email tray, path where it came from, and it had come through Annie. So that just, I just kind of thought, okay.
So then again, it was sent to the Planning Board Office?
Well, let me try to find this letter again.
Cause.
Well, I just, I have the copy of it and it's Dear Town Officials, Townspeople, and it goes on, and then it regards Jace Cutrell. I don't need to go into the, the body of it. It was very well written. Let me try to, I can try to dig out the email for you. I just didn't want to take up too much time here.
Oh. I'm sorry I'm not up to date, but I guess we need to have all the facts and if we're going to talk about it.
The letter was sent on July 20th, Michael. Okay. Thanks.
The what? 20th? To the Planning Board Office? Or just to all the members?
I have a question about that. When the Planning Board Office gets an email that isn't shared in our meeting as correspondence, nor does it seem to be shared with all Planning Board members? I know I was copied on that particular one and forwarded it to the rest of the Planning Board because I thought that was fair. Um, I don't know, you know, I don't understand what our procedures are. Don't we have access to all communications that come into the Planning Board? Shouldn't that be part of our correspondence?
Sandy, this is Jen. I might be able to assist with that question if you'd like me to.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, Jen, if you could please give us your background, yes. Thank you.
Um, so generally, all emails that come into any town office are public record unless they deal with legal matters or personnel. So yes, all communications into the Planning Board Office are a matter of public record. The, the one nuance to this is that whether or not a Planning Board member on an active case is having any discussions or has outside knowledge of that application during the course that it's before the Planning Board. And if they do, one of the recommendations is that they disclose that information. It can become, and it, that is, whether someone has a conflict of interest or not, it is their decision whether they actually recuse themselves. The, a Board can always request it, but it is ultimately the Planning Board's members' choice. But as a matter of public record, anything going into the Planning Board Office minus legal and personnel items are public record.
And so.
That, that does not mean every email that goes into the Planning Board Office is forwarded to the Planning Board because sometimes there are just logistical things being happened, but it would technically be a matter of public record.
So in our procedures, do we have a, something about emails that like every corresponding email should be sent to the, or put in a file or, you know, shown as correspondence during our meeting? I'm not sure how we handle those.
You don't have anything like, that is that specific in your procedures? Anything submitted as part of an application should absolutely be forwarded to the Planning Board and be part of that application's record.
Okay. So as far as someone sending an apology, then, you know, possibly we didn't have to ped that as a correspondence. I don't know.
That's a little bit of an oddity as far as how it relates to an active application or not.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, this is Mike. For the email, I found, it's just, all I have is it came from Annie. It's to the entire Board and CC to the, looks like the select Board. So I just, that raised a red flag for me only because of my, having some experience with cases before being on a Board like this. So I just wanted to bring that up. And Annie can, Annie can, you know, it's, it's an easy question, I guess. If there's any things you need to recuse yourself for, that's entirely.
I don't think there's anything I need to recuse myself about. I am in the interests of the town of Newton. So thank you for raising it and I feel very confident that I can give uncolluded input.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I can't, I'm, I'm just sorry to interrupt. This is Greg with, uh, and I was just curious if, um, how, how do we access emails as far as the public goes?
Who's speaking, please?
Uh, this is Greg Ravencraft.
Oh, okay.
Sandy, this is Jen again.
Hi, Jen.
Um, you would need to file a right to know request if it was for sort of, in general, more in depth than a standard application sort of documentation that had been submitted. But they are public record. You may have to file a right to know request.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I, I have a comment. Um, it seems to me, and I don't know if we need to make this some sort of a formal public hearing or a rule or regulation, or if it's just something, to me, it seems very normal and reasonable to be copied on any or correspondence between the Planning Board and applicants and any of their advisors and so forth. You know, I mean, if I need to file a right to know request in order to get that, I can do that. But it seems to me as members, we should be getting that information. And then if, like Sandy said, she doesn't want to look at her email, that's her choice.
Yeah, and this is Greg again. And I, I would agree. I mean, how, we would have to like just continuously file a right to know, you know, whatever you're, you're talking about, in order to receive these emails that are, that are, you know, the correspondence. It seemed like it should be like an open chain so we can all, the public, all know what's going on. And I'm just, just saying.
Annie, this is Jen. Um, just something that might be useful for as perspective. This applicant, and I'm not going to go into the details, emailed a question that I believe also went to Jim in the Planning Board Office related to procedural things about when a wetland application needed to be filed or not. I was able to provide an answer to that question, but it was a logistical question. So are you wanting, are you seeking that level of correspondence? I guess it's sort of a, just food for thought.
I think as someone was just saying, for me, it would be helpful to understand what is going on, you know, as far as requests for application and, and this. I mean, this particular one is a very complicated series of applications and series of things. I'd like the background information. It would help me to make a better decision. I don't know if other Planning Board members feel that way. Maybe because I'm new, I'm particularly handicapped in not having all that background information, but I'd really like to have it.
Hey, this is Edwin. If I may make a comment, sorry to waste everyone's time. Um, you know, I agree with Annie. I think we should be copied on everything. For example, and someone correct me if I'm wrong, there was a tour of the 125 Development on August 1st that I did not get any kind of email or anything on, and I am an elected member by the townspeople. So I mean, I'd like to be included in Planning Board emails as the elected member on the Board. So yeah, that, that would be a good idea to have us see all those emails.
Well, oh, this is Sandra. Um, I believe that site walk had to do with the zoning Board of Appeals, not the Planning Board. So it, it was a zoning Board of Appeals site walk. So that did not come through the Planning Board. So as a Planning Board member, you, we didn't have anything to do with that site walk.
All right. No, I just want to make sure I'm on all the emails, like I said, as an elected member. I know the townspeople would want me on there. So thank you, Sandra. I apologize for that.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, may I speak?
Yes, go ahead, Jim.
Ninety-nine percent of the emails that come through this office are simply administrative. I'm looking through them. It may be my asking you a question, you responding. All the applications are collected and they are posted on the website as soon as I can get them up there as quickly as possible. It might be very confusing for members because on some of the applications tonight, we have three different iterations of plans that they go out with the Board packet so that people are working only with the most recent documents. If I were to forward every email that comes in to the office to people, you might be getting 40 to 50 a day.
Madam Chair, Larry.
Well, is Jim done? Are you done, Jim?
Sure.
Okay. Larry, was that you?
Yeah, can we continue with the agenda and put this on the new business at the end of the meeting? Since it's only about emails being forwarded to all members and continue with the agenda, please?
Well, I think that's a good idea. That maybe we should talk about these, a procedure coming forward. Seems like.
And.
We're, we're in the electronic age now and I don't know. There's a lot of things to consider.
One more thing. Do we have to name an alternate because Roger recused himself? So a short, a member?
Um, we have a guess. Do we have to, Jen?
Um, I would recommend it since you do have alternates present and you have someone who has recused themselves.
Oh, sorry. Point of order. I'm sorry. I'm not. Okay, so, um, in Jim's place, I think we have Bob Zalinski, correct?
I think it would be Steve Forza.
Is he here?
Yes.
I didn't hear his name called.
He wasn't here during the roll call.
I see his face on Zoom.
I don't think we've had, um, Bob hasn't been yet, so he's here. Bobby, you there?
I'm here.
Okay. So you're a voting member in place of Roger.
Okay, thank you.
For tonight. Okay. So now we're going to continue with the 125 full lot subdivision, Six Puzzle Lane, X map 14, block one, lot 27-3. Then this is, I think, our third continuation of this plan. Jennifer, if you could tell us the latest on this, I believe you have a new update for us.
Sure. Um, on August 6th, the applicant forwarded an updated plan. So I provide, I emailed around this morning or early this afternoon, a quick update of my August 4th review letter. So I'm just going to go through that letter and comment on what has been updated or completed, just so that we're all on the same page. And this was also forwarded to the applicants. So concerning the variances, they've all been listed on the cover sheet of the plan set. Approval from Plastow is still required for any approval of this subdivision. A signature block should actually be added to the plan set as well. At the time of me updating this this afternoon, no new waivers had been requested. Currently, the applicant had applied for two waivers. One was to request relief from a high intensity soil survey for the lot and also for application fees. Those had previously been submitted. As of about four o'clock this afternoon, the applicant also applied for a few other waivers, which I will let them go through. The majority of these items for survey requirements, topographic contours, manmade features, utilities, plan scale, all related to the larger lot, the lot 27-3, where only limited information had been submitted. They have, um, asked for waivers for most of those items in their list, and I will let them go through and provide their background. For number nine, test pits, test pit information had been previously submitted for lot 27-7. That's the lot that does not have the building on it, of the smaller lots. That information was provided along with the location of the pits and the 4,000 square foot reserve area for a septic system. There was no information provided for the remaining three lots. That's also one of the waiver requests is to ask for waivers for allowing no test pits to put on, be put on those lots. The one really remaining comment that a waiver simply can't be asked for, but it was a comment in my first review letter and it's carried through, is still the comment about the concern of the frontage on the largest of the lots on 27-3. My understanding is the applicant has had the lot re-surveyed. It had previously come in that the frontage was 49.97 feet. They had it re-surveyed and also found a previous subdivision plan that referenced the frontage being 50.07 feet. So there is one comment that the future development would at least to build a road require 50 feet. I still recommend that it would require actually 60 feet, given the proposed use. But the, the lot now does meet that 50-foot requirement. I would recommend that the Planning Board require that the applicant have the licensed land surveyor who did that work, read date and sign the application to just verify it. That's really my last comment. I will say, given all of the waiver requests that have been submitted, for those of you that do on the Board have your zoning book in front of you, if you look at subdivision regulation 10.1, it's on page 34. I'll give folks a minute. It's section 10.1D. When you're considering waivers, there are two criteria that you have to apply when granting the waivers. And those are that the strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship on the applicant. And the second one is the granting of the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the ordinance. So with any waiver request that has been submitted, you do need to consider those two criteria, but based on the waivers that have been submitted, I would say that this application is complete enough for jurisdiction. That does not mean that there's not more information you could ask for. But if the waivers are not granted, then the applicant would need to supply that information. So my, my recommendation for proceeding, you should hear from the applicant. But based on that, I do think they have a complete application. You should then go through all of the waiver requests that apply to this application, because I believe it was put in as one letter for both applications this evening. Go through all of those waivers, and if any of them are not granted, then that information would need to be supplied. I'm done.
You're done? That was a lot.
Sorry.
All right. So the applicant like to speak now. Chase, is it going to be you?
Good evening. This is Bill Gregzak from Gregzak and Sons. I'm here with Coleman McDonough and Tom Leckborg. We're on the computer that says case. Anyways, the only thing, you know, that I wanted to add was as far as any discussion with the, the 50-foot frontage on Route 108 is, I see that as a engineering and design issue and trying to design our road within the existing constraints of the property. We are making great progress, particularly there. We're maintaining proposed design site distance on 108, but that is all in the next step, I feel. Any requests for waivers for, with the variety of ways is not with this. This is simply a four lot subdivision that we're trying to get approved.
Sandy, this is Jen. Yeah, go ahead, Jen. Um, I do agree that the, the 50-foot frontage is not something that can be asked for a waiver and what a road is proposed. If it is, that would be the time to ask for any waiver from that. The item for the Board is really the, the size of the subdivision and create, granting of this subdivision will require that lot to only have access from that 50-foot or 50.07-foot entrance. That's just for the Board to consider, and you can always ask for more information, including a roadway intersection design as part of the subdivision if you wanted to.
If I could just add that, um, you know, we are, we are limited with that 50-foot. And if we could design all the required issues such as site distance grading drainage within that 50 feet, then I don't, I don't see it being a problem. And I, at this point, we don't see it being a problem. We're. We're, we're making it work. So I think, I think this discussion should be held off. We're planning on making our submittal for the large project in two weeks.
Okay. So if I'm remembering this right, this full lot subdivision was the one the ZBA gave the variances on, correct? And then we never approved the subdivision, so this is the one we're talking about.
Correct. All the variances have been granted.
Okay, so can we read those list of variances that got accepted, are they on this plan?
They're on the cover sheet.
Okay. And I'm looking at the five, three, plan, right? Dated February 18th. Yeah, okay. I just wanna make sure I'm looking at the right thing. Yeah, that's it, yay.
There's been a few revisions on it. The initial submittal was back in February, so, but it has been updated. And the all the variances are listed on the cover page.
So should that date represent the newest date that the information is? Or should it say February? Is it newer than February?
There's a revision box that gives in the middle, bottom middle of the title page that'll list the revisions. And if that page has been revised, it's listed the date, the number of revision it is, and the description of the revision. And there were some changes made in response to Jen's comments.
Sandy, may I speak?
This is Annie.
Oh, go ahead, Annie. I was just reading the pages.
So it looks like the revision date is July 22 of this year.
Correct, for the title page.
For the title page, yeah. Each page is different, well. There is one page dated August 2.
Ah, okay.
Added Tom Plan of Comments 88.
And sheet four was revised on August 6, 2020.
So I have a question about Jen's comment that the survey be signed and updated. Does that mean that you're looking for another revision statement from the surveyor or?
No, my recommendation is that the surveyor that did the work and has come across the fact the frontage is slightly bigger than it originally was, simply update their stamp and they get it signed to verify that that is the correct number. It would be a very common condition of approval to have any professional stamps on any plan be signed and dated, so.
All the final plans will be signed and dated and ready for filing out to registry.
Okay, so this is Sandra, I have a question. On sheet four, it shows the cul-de-sac with the existing roundabout. And then it says existing right away in utility easement in like a little road that comes around.
Yes.
So the proposal for the lots is gonna cut off any access to that backland, like the back thing? From that road?
There is a right of way access easement that is given to each of these lots.
And who's gonna maintain that easement?
That'll be a road maintenance, Sandra. And that will be forwarded to the town by Phil Perry. It'll be a road maintenance agreement.
Is that an official road or is that just an access? I don't know if the town has accepted that as a road.
That is not a road. It is considered a driveway. But there will be a maintenance agreement in both six puzzling, the Quintanas, Eddie, if he develops a lot, knows that, you know, it'll, it'll cover grass cutting and snow plowing. We've all been here for years and years. We don't really split hairs on raising plow blades, but it has to be a physical road maintenance agreement placed, and Phil Perry will forward that to the town.
I'm still confused if it's a road or driveway.
Sandy, it is a driveway. It is not a public road beyond the cul-de-sac. The biggest lot will maintain frontage on a public road with the 50 foot frontage on 108.
Okay, so they're basically cutting off their access through that puzzle lane to any of that backland.
Currently, lot 27 three has frontage on Puzzle Lane and on 108 on a public road.
Okay. Just, just to make this crystal clear, when, when ZBA issued all the variances, all these lots were created, even 27 seven. So what happens on 27 seven or phase two and phase three is a moot point. These lots have been basically subdivided, depicted lot lines for the planning board to approve as a subdivision on this private driveway that'll have a maintenance agreement similar to what they would have in Sargent Woods. I, I think that, I think that, you know, sometimes it gets, it gets confused with the approval of Plastow and what's happening with phase two and phase three and what's gonna happen on 27 seven. It's, it's, it's a moot point. Again, these lots were, they're, they're approved per the ZBA as depicted lots. Whatever happens with them afterwards, you know, with the development of 27 seven, with the development of phase two and phase three, again, will come before the planning board.
Sandy, this is Jen, I just wanna correct one thing. These lots are not legal lots of record until the planning board approves the subdivision. All variances required have been granted for that. Until it is recorded at the registry of deeds based on an approval of this planning board and Plastow, they are not legal lots of record.
Correct, that was my point. I, the waivers were granted that he could have lots on a non-town road or whatever in the but, right, they're, it's, they're not considered a lot until we vote on them that it's a lot. So that's, I'm just trying to think, cuz like you said, this is it was set up as a commercial property with like, say renters, right? You have the buildings and everybody rents. Now we're gonna subdivide that section into four lots, then presumably sell each one of those lots off to individual people. So now it's not like, and it's like an industrial park, but now everybody owns it. So like I said, at the beginning, we made it whatever acreage that is. But now we're making it smaller into four lots that happen to have, three of them have buildings on them and one doesn't have a building. So this is a new process, or at least the first time I've been in the process of taking a big section and now dividing it into four and making them smaller. We granted the waiver because the building was already there and we changed from a whatever 54 to 75 foot. So that was, you know, consideration that we are, that building was already there and, you know, our rules changed, so that was okay. But we still, you know, have other things to talk about and figure out. Like you said, they're not considered lots yet.
Sandy, may I speak?
Go ahead, Annie.
This is really a question for Jen. I am confused with the updates to her comments. And I'd really appreciate it if she could take the time. I don't know if anybody else needs this or not, but go through, you know, one through 10, briefly just saying which ones are and do and don't apply at this point in her opinion and her recommendation. For instance, I don't understand why we need utility information for something for lot 27 dash three that's proposed when there's no buildings proposed. I just, I just don't get it. So if she could please understand that, you know, help me to understand her feeling on that, I'd really appreciate it.
Sure. Jen, can you please pull up my review letter? I think it would be easier for folks. Thank you. So I will say this was updated after, an updated plan set was submitted at about 12 o'clock on Thursday. So in time for your packets to go out, not tons of time for me to review. So as far as the variances, so item one, the variances have been, uh, that's the wrong one, Jim. This is for the subdivision, not for the site plan. That looks like the correct one.
That is the one.
Thank you. So item one, the variances have been listed on the cover sheet that have been received. So that comment has been taken care of. They have completed that comment. Item two, approval from Plastow is needed. That comment doesn't really require any change other than they should include a signature box for Plastow. So that's the one change that I would recommend that they make.
Question, question. Why does, why does there have to be an approval from Plastow to just separate out and to subdivide these?
Because lot 27 three, the way it currently exists legally, goes into Plastow. I realize the three smaller lots are all in Newton, but the largest lot does go into Plastow. So Plastow under state law also has to approve the subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
Of the waivers, there were two waivers that have been applied for previously regarding the high intensity soil survey and request for reduction in application fees. At the time I wrote this, no additional waivers had been requested. You have not acted upon the two waivers that had been requested with the high intensity soil survey or the application fee. You have not taken those up yet. Item four, the survey requirements. At this point, a waiver has been asked for relief from this subdivision requirement in your subdivision regulations. What it very specifically asks for is the means and bounds of the entire parcels being proposed. Lot 27 three as it's proposed is a very large lot. It may be a reasonable waiver to grant. However, at the time of the review, that had not been asked for. Your requirements require surveying of all means and bounds of every lot being proposed. That also includes the comment about having the licensed land surveyor recertify and stamp the plan. That is not a requirement, it is a recommendation at this point because of the change of the frontage, because they did go out and re-survey. Item five, the topographic contours. Again, when this review is done, no waiver had been requested. Because it is a requirement of all lots having those topographic contours, including 27 three, that requirement had not been met. They had supplied in the front part of 27 three as it's proposed, a limited extent of the topographic contours. So it had been partially met, not fully. A waiver has been requested. If granted, they don't need to do the rest of it.
I'm sorry, a waiver has been requested or has not?
Has.
Has been, has been.
Has been requested.
Okay.
Number eight, the manmade features. Again, with the proposed 27 three, there was only a limited amount of manmade features actually displayed on what was provided. A waiver has been requested. If it's granted, they don't need to do it. If it is not granted, they would need to provide more information. Very specifically, there is a dirt road that goes all the way through lot 27 three as it's proposed. It's very evident from aerial photos. It's simply not displayed on the plan as it's proposed. Item seven, utilities. There is no utility information that's been proposed for 27 three. That is mainly related to what is near 108. That has not been fully provided in what they had submitted. They have requested a waiver at this point.
Excuse me, Jen, it's Sandra. When you say they've requested a waiver, is that on this sheet or they sent that to the board?
They sent that via email at about four o'clock this afternoon. The one waiver that that does not include is actually about the application fees. But that had been previously submitted.
So we don't have that information in front of us right now?
You do not have that in your packet that was mailed out.
Okay, thank you.
Item eight with the plan scale. Again, lot 27 three as it's proposed did not meet your scale requirements in your subdivision regulations. They have asked for a waiver. Number nine is a slightly different situation in that test pits had been shown on the previous iteration for results on lot 27 seven as it's proposed. The locations had not been indicated nor had a 4,000 square foot reserve area been shown. That has been provided. Test pit locations on the two lots that already have buildings were not shown. That would be a fairly reasonable waiver to grants and has been asked for because those lots already have buildings on them. Lot 27 three as it's proposed does not have test pits. It does not have a 4,000 square foot reserve area. It is a very large lot. The likelihood of it being able to accommodate a septic system is very high. Asking for a waiver may be reasonable for that large of a lot, but at the time it was submitted, that had not been asked for. And I think, unless you'd like me to go through 10 again with the frontage.
No, that one's
thorough on that one.
I'm clear on that one.
Okay.
So I was, I, I'm sorry, I was a little bit behind on the thing. I was trying to read your red things as you were commenting, and, and I didn't realize until Sandra asked and kind of clarified it, which I thank you for, that this sheet in front of us that's on the screen actually doesn't have the latest updates. So if you could quickly go through the ones of one through 10 that have no waiver requests and the ones that do, just say waiver or no waiver.
All of the items that we're missing at this point have requested waivers. There is nothing missing, which is why I recommended that based on the waiver requests, the application is complete.
Ah, thank you.
If you, if you take jurisdiction of it, then you will need to go through the waivers. If a waiver is not granted, then they would need to supply that information.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to make a motion that we accept jurisdiction based on that recommendation.
Check goodbye, Larry.
Do we have any discussion? Any other planning board people?
This is just discussion over the motion.
Yes, just discussion over the motion. I, well, I have a, like a question. If we were to take jurisdiction tonight, then those waivers that they sent today, how do those get incorporated to discuss those tonight?
So I think there are two ways that you could deal with it. You could take jurisdiction and then continue to the next meeting to discuss the waiver, so everybody can see the letter that was submitted. That's one way. That does start the 65 day clock. That is probably the downside of that, so it will eat up some time. Or Or you could have Jim show the waiver request letter on the screen and you can take jurisdiction and start to discuss that tonight. Or you can decide, I guess, that it's not a complete application and continue it. That's, I guess, really the third option. Thank you.
Um, I have a question. If we accept jurisdiction tonight, does that start the sixty-five day clock? Whether we, it does?
Whether you deal with the waivers tonight or not. Yes, it does start the sixty-five day clock.
Okay, so I'd like to withdraw my motion to accept jurisdiction and I'd like instead to make a motion that we discuss and go through the waivers tonight after we accept jurisdiction.
So you would want to accept jurisdiction and then go through the waivers?
Well, my motion is that were we to accept jurisdiction, that we then say we'll go through the waiver requests tonight. The point being not to accept jurisdiction and start the sixty-five day clock and have to put it off for a couple of weeks. I'd like us to make that decision ahead of time. Will we or will we not go through the waiver requests?
Well, I think that depends on how much discussion there is towards it. I mean, we're not just limited to the waivers. We're limited to, you know, talking about other things too. So I don't know.
I hear what you're saying, Sandy. I'm just responding to what Jen said in the different ways that we could handle these waiver requests. One of them being that we simply wait two weeks to see them and study them. And the second being that we put them up on the screen and go through them tonight. And I wanted to see what the planning board would like to do so that I could decide how I wanted to vote on whether to take jurisdiction or not.
Andy, this is Jen. Just one suggestion, you, you may want to have the applicant go through all of the waivers and state why they are requesting them.
Yeah, Jen, I'm sorry, uh, this is Greg Ravencraft again. I was wondering, who is this that would like to take jurisdiction of this? Can you just please repeat that?
That was Planning Board member Annie Collier speaking that.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you very much.
Well, she didn't say she was in favor. She said she learned the two options.
Yeah, no, I, I think I, I think I understand what's going on. That's fine. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Can we second that motion so that we can discuss it? So may you second it?
I don't know. Do any other planning board, Mike or Bob or Edwin, do you have any thoughts on this?
Uh, this is Mike. My thought is I'm always in favor of clean motions. I would like to either have a, a motion that says we accept jurisdiction or not and leave it at that. And then we'll continue this.
Yeah, good call. Good call, Mike.
Excuse me, point of order. I believe that Greg is a public, member of the public and not a member of the planning board and isn't supposed to be speaking at this time.
Greg? So should we mute Greg? Greg, all right. Jim, can you put Greg on mute?
He is.
Okay. Okay, so I guess we do have a motion on the floor.
But it hasn't been seconded.
Right, so I guess nobody wants to second it.
Right there. Sandra, this is, Sandra, this is Barbara White. May I ask something?
Sure, Barbara, go ahead.
I had, I had my hand up, but.
Oh, sorry.
That's fine, that's fine. Okay. It's always been the premise of the planning board to not look at things for the first time at the night of the meeting because they didn't have time to digest what was, what was going on. I mean, and we can read this and, and he can explain what he wants, but usually we read this and we look at the plan and we look at the ordinance. So it's kind of like pushing it right forward to us. I understand they're trying to get this moved along, but usually we don't take information at the last minute, especially at a meeting.
Thank you, you're right.
Sandra?
Yes.
Annie? That's one reason I made that motion, because it seemed to me that it would make sense for the planning board to decide ahead of time. You know, are we going to look at it and make an exception? Are we going to wait two weeks? And if we're going to wait two weeks, then I'd like to make a motion to continue this discussion for two weeks and, and then make a motion next time to accept jurisdiction when we can really look at these things. So my motion is to continue this discussion.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Larry.
Didn't Jen say the application was complete and we could take jurisdiction of twenty-seven dash three? Was this the original, the original part of the meeting is to take jurisdiction of twenty-seven-three and then we'll do the waivers at, at another date?
Larry, this is Jen. I do think the application based on the waivers is complete, so I think you could take jurisdiction. The downside of doing it right now is that you just received these waiver requests. I do think you should hear from the applicant about the waiver requests. But you just got this information this afternoon. Whether you wanted to take them up this evening is really up to the board. But if you take them up, if you accept jurisdiction and don't take up the waivers tonight, that just ate up two weeks of the sixty-five day clock.
And if we take jurisdiction tonight, what's the impact on the waivers going to be in, in your theory on the long run? Is it going to jeopardize the project or is it going to help the project?
I can't say whether it's going to jeopardize it. All I can say is that they do need you to approve all of the waiver requests in order for you to be able to approve the project. You can take jurisdiction with the waiver requests, but to approve the project, ultimately, you would have to grant the waiver request in addition to other topics, but.
So this is Sandra, um, Jen. So you're saying that we could ask the applicant to explain all these waivers to us tonight?
Yep.
And then we could still take up Annie's about putting off voting on the plan or taking jurisdiction of the plan for another two weeks?
You could.
Clock doesn't start. And then, like you said, we, we have information here. We'll have two weeks to dissect it and go along. Like Barbara said, we can look at the things so that next week, in our meeting in two weeks, we'll have read all of their waivers and looked up all the rules. So we'd have in our mind what we want to do. And then that way the clock wouldn't start, so the applicant isn't losing any time.
You certainly could take that approach, yes.
Okay. Thank you. So would the applicant like to explain his waivers?
Yes, I would. What we were asking for, all these waivers listed are for the hundred and sixty-four point six-six acre remaining parcel. We have supplied all the required information, uh, except for the test pits on the existing buildings for the three new lots that are being create, created. So with that, um, what I'd like to do is just go down each section and, uh, we could talk about it. It's a bit of a rehash what Jen had done earlier. But, um, the survey requirements, we're looking, it's, it's a lot of detail that, uh, is looked for when you're doing a development and we understand that. We provided on the three new lots in that area, but we're asking for a waiver for the hundred and sixty-four acre remaining parcel. It's pretty common to do this, especially when you're dealing, you know, with a hundred and sixty-four acre remaining parcel. And I think the area that we're subdividing off is less than ten acres. Topographic contours, these are the two-foot elevations that are shown on, uh, your grading plans. And, uh, we show them on the three new lots, but we are asking for a waiver from the remaining parcel. Again, that's very common to ask for that when it's, uh, such a large parcel that's remaining. As you all know, we are working and proceeding forward with that. So all this information will be available to the board when we submit the, uh, phase two slash phase three subdivision. Man-made features, again, that is talking about the issue, uh, you know, with survey. It's already, you know, uh, buildings, fences. There are no buildings or, you know, you know, there's a gate, but, um, that's about it. So, but we're asking for that waiver on that, uh, hundred and sixty-six acres. Utilities, uh, we show the utilities on the, uh, three lots. We do not, uh, show any utilities on the hundred and sixty-four acres, uh, simple reason we don't have any. But we're asking for a waiver on that too. And another one is the plan scale. Right now, the, uh, the whole project fits on one sheet at one inch equals three hundred foot scale. And your, uh, requirement is one inch equals a hundred foot scale. If we were to put, if we were to put that whole project on one hundred scale, it would end up being four sheets instead of one sheet. And since we're not proposing any work in the hundred and sixty-four acre area, we felt that, you know, the most important thing that we need to show is the perimeter, you know, the new property lines and the existing property lines for the project, uh, for that parcel. We asked for a waiver from the, uh, from the high intensity soil mapping. And that is, uh, again, references the big lot. We, we will be showing that in detail when we submit phase two and phase three. But since we're not proposing any work at this time with this subdivision, uh, we're requesting that, uh, we just not show it. It will be shown, you will see it, but we were. And test pits, the issue with the test pits is, uh, we did, uh, two test pits for lot twenty-seven dash seven or the proposed lot twenty-seven dash seven. But we did not do any new test pits for the existing lot, uh, for the existing buildings, which have been there a while, where they have existing, uh, septic systems. And it's not unusual to be asking for these kinds of waivers when you're, um, subdividing off only a small amount of acreage off of a large parcel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are two additional waivers that were requested with the application.
Oh, those are the two we've got at the beginning.
One of them is a repeat that's on this, uh, new letter and that is, the soils information from this, uh, conservation service and, I did not include the, uh, procedure, uh, format application. I think that was more a matter of, and I think, uh, you know, that's for future discussion as far as how, uh, some of the, money is being deposited and how it's being spent. And, uh, I, I think the bottom line with that is that, there's been a couple of, you know, this is the second time we submitted this application. And, uh, I guess, uh, what we're looking for is a, a bit of accounting because each time that we submit it, you know, like this set of plans, we write a check for five thousand dollars. So we just want to know where it goes. And if there's any left, we'd like some back.
So is that number two that we're showing here, a waiver you're still acting for or you say you're going to drop that one?
Um, I, I'd like to drop that, but, and, and, but if I do, I would like to let the board know that we want, we, we, we just want a good accounting of the monies, I guess.
Madam Chairman, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, Jim.
When this application came in previously, the deposits were made into NEPRA and an accounting and a refund check was issued. I want to say it was back in January for the previous iteration.
Okay. So we have no fees on this application right now?
Well, there, there are fees because there have been a butter notices, there's been a legal notice. It's basically the same as the previous one. However, according to my job description, which talks about the accounting services, those are done at the completion of the project, not midstream.
Um, Jim, um, is, is that a record that, um, you can just forward on? Is, you, you must have copies of the check and all, um, and what you sent out. So if you don't mind, if you could just, uh.
It went, it went by certified mail in February of twenty-twenty to one-twenty-five Development Corps and was signed for by somebody who uses a squiggly line as their signature.
Anonymous.
Jim, if I can just add, this is Colin McDonough. Is, is, is like, I'm going to say four or five recent, um, developments that we've had that we've asked for this massive accounting. And we have, we, we, um, Jase has asked for it probably five times. I believe, you know, um, other members have, you know, been addressed about this. And, um, we have had zero accounting on going back to lot four, this lot, all of the lots. We have had zero accounting as to where the monies were spent, what's left in the account. And also there was a dispute. I think there was, I think, three hundred and ninety dollars. And, um, we believe that that was paid for on the last five thousand dollars that you sent back. You deducted that amount and we questioned it and we never got any answer, along with the rest of the, all of the accountings for all of the lots.
Madam Chair?
Oh, go ahead, Larry. Was it Larry?
Yeah, don't they get a, I know they, they, you guys, the town receives a check for five thousand. Not sure how long they keep their money until the project's done, but when we spend money out of that account, shouldn't they get, the company get a statement saying what was paid, what comes out, what's in there? Maybe on a monthly basis or bimonthly basis? I'm not sure how that runs.
Um, I'm not sure how those are paid. Can you help?
Exactly. I, I, I credit what, um, Larry just said. And, you know, um, I, I think everybody runs some kind of an accounting, bookkeeping, you know, ledger, about QuickBooks. You know, you should be able to press a button and send me, you know, not at the end of the project, during the project, at any point in time of the project where all the money is spent. I've got, you know, five thousand on, you know, lot seven, on lot four. I mean, you know, I've written thousands and thousands of dollars and I have zero accounting.
Okay, we're getting off the topic, but, um, we can take that into consideration.
Madam Chair? I, I want to table this, but I'll look into it as far as the select board goes, as far as accountability when we receive money. And we'll have an answer for the next meeting.
Right, exactly. I mean, the developer should keep track of the money we send back also. So his bookkeeping, he should be able to look it up, too. So, you know, it goes both ways. Okay, so now we're back on to the waivers. You, the applicant told us all the waivers. Does any planning board people have questions about any of the waivers?
Well, this is Bob Zalinski.
Oh, go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, well, Jen, you know, read these 10 things herself and said that these are all common things. In between the gentleman that just spoke and Jen's, you know, explanation of them, that, you know, it's standard procedure on a lot of development like this, that we should accept it.
Mr. Zalinski, this is Jen. Just one clarifying. I think that because the waivers were submitted, the application is complete. I have not given an opinion about the waivers one way or the other. Some of them are common to ask for.
Right. And that's what I caught with my ear, that they were, I thought they were all common.
They might be common to ask for, but not com, you know, you still can say yes or no, even though they're common that they brought up.
Okay.
So at this point, I'd like to make a motion that we continue this application for two weeks to give a chance to review these waivers and get Jen's opinion on what is common and isn't common, not just the applicant's opinion.
This is Sandra. I'll second Annie's motion. Any discussion on the motion?
Excuse me, can I interject?
So, who's this? Yeah. I think we're going to do the planning board comments first. And then we have a second for the motion. Does any planning board member like to speak on the motion?
Yeah, this is Mike. Just one thing, this is, you know, I understand that these are common waivers at some point. And the one thing I'm struggling with is we know this isn't just being subdivided off as a backland or a tree farm or, or recreation land or something. And I understand that most of these issues that they're asking for waivers for will probably be supplied in the next phase of what we'll be doing with this. One thing that I, I would like from the applicant as is I need some more information on the manmade features and what's out there right now. Maybe just an aerial photo or something like that, and it could just be digital email. I know in the past, when I was overhead, there were, there were vehicles out there. I think there was a boat at one time out there and some other things. I'm just wondering, like, what, what is the condition of it, of manmade features? I know there's no structures out there, but that's the only thing. So my thing is, I understand, you know, this is a, it's an industrial area, and they've made that very clear to us, that that's in our zoning. But the things they're asking for here are as if there wasn't going to be any more development.
Okay.
Can I interject?
No, there's, I have, I have a comment first, Sandra.
Yeah.
Yes, on the, on the recommendation that the surveyor update with the signature and stamp, the change, I think that that number 10 should be taken care of in the next two weeks so that we have that, too. I think Michael's idea of having the aerial photographs is a really good one. Probably can be done with the drone that they use and, according to my understanding. And, you know, I think if we got that other thing for the surveyor, that would be helpful.
It could be something off of Google Maps, either. They don't have to spend the money on a drone if they don't want to.
So, okay.
But I know there's.
Yeah.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Please, thank you. To help us along, we would, we would like you to take jurisdiction tonight. And in that time, then we could discuss the waivers next week. And I could bring the assigned plan, we have a stamp of the surveyor. And I know I have a signed plan by him also. And we could present a, I don't know, Google Earth, I guess, is probably what I'll just end up doing and show you that. But, yeah, if I, it would help us if you, if you would accept jurisdiction tonight. We feel that this is a very small subdivision, there are no new roads being created. So there isn't, it's, it's a fee simple subdivision. It's just new lot lines. And if you accept it, if you accept it for us tonight, that would be great. And we can move on to waivers after that.
Madam Chair, question?
Go ahead, Larry.
The, the question on the 65 days, wants to take jurisdiction. Is that for, they, they have 65 days to clear up those waivers? Or is there more involved in the 65 days of, who does that fall, is the planning board's deadline or the applicant's deadline to complete whatever he needs to complete on day 64?
Jen, could you possibly give us the definition of that 65 days?
Yeah, the 65 day clock is a state law that you have to, within, as the planning board, within that 65 days, approve, deny, or approve with conditions any application. It's, it's actually really there to protect the applicant to make sure that the planning board doesn't carry on and on and on. If the applicant agrees within that 65 days to extend that deadline, they can by up to 90 days. It's really there to protect the applicant.
Is there a motion on the floor now?
There is.
There's a motion on the floor to, um, continue this till our next meeting. And I seconded. That's what we're discussing.
Now, you also see something to the planning board, this is Colin McDonough. I, I don't know if, if everybody realizes, I know that we've had COVID and, you know, this has been continued, like, I'm going to say, like, five or six times. This has been ongoing for a year. Bill, you know, I mean, we've had Zoom meetings, we haven't had Zoom meetings. I mean, again, you know, over a years period of time, if, if we look at this with the variances that we're asked, oh, the waivers that we're asking for, I mean, you've got like, probably like 16 meetings if, you know, if you extended out 90 days to discuss this. I'm willing to fly a drone Monday. I would like Jennifer or the board to, you know, you know, request anything they need. And we will have it for the next meeting to discuss and hopefully put this to bed. This is, I mean, this is getting, you know, this is getting real old and it's been, been a year. And we've got plenty of time to discuss some small, common, commonly asked waivers.
Thank you.
Madam Chair? This is Annie.
Yep, go ahead.
I just want to point out that there is absolutely no benefit to the applicant or to anyone else to take jurisdiction ahead of time. All it does is to shorten the timeline for potential, if any waivers aren't granted, to be able to satisfy the condition. So it seems to me that this is in the interest of everyone to continue it. I know it's frustrating for, probably for all of us, that we have to continue it again. But we're really not going to accomplish anything further by taking jurisdiction tonight, because we're not going to review anything. And, you know, I mean, nothing gets accomplished.
Correct.
Except chopping two weeks off the timeline.
Correct. And I think, because we did discuss some of these waivers and people gave their opinions that the applicant has some information going forward. So I guess we'll call the question that's on the floor. Jim?
Ms. Estherbrook?
Can you read the thing again, please?
The motion is to continue to August 25th.
Aye.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Mr. Foote?
Nay.
Mr. White?
Hey, Jimmy, you on mute?
Say it again.
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Kronlick?
No.
Mr. Zalinski?
Aye.
Two opposed, five in favor.
Okay. So we'll continue till the next meeting on the 25th. For the homework for the planning board, read all those waivers and have your opinions ready. And any other questions? Okay. Um, I believe we're on to the next thing. Where's my paper? Okay. Number two, 125 Development Corp. of Plasto requests a public hearing on a major non-residential site plan on Puzzle Lane. Properties reference as tax map 14, block one, lot 27-7. Hold on. I believe, tell me if I'm wrong, Jennifer, this is the plan, the formal plan for the thing that we've been doing, the design review for the last couple of times?
No.
No. Oh, no?
No, this is to put a building on, from the last subdivision, if it's approved, to put a building on the smallest lot that does not currently have a building off of Puzzle Lane.
Okay, so this is for the piece that, that we haven't even subdivided from that other?
Correct. So any approval would have to be conditioned on a part of that subdivision.
Sorry, all these numbers, I get confused what we're talking about.
So this is the little lot.
This is the little lot.
With no building on it.
Okay. Would you like to give your opinion on your review, your review of this?
Sure. Similar to the last one, some revised plans came in. Actually, moments after I had sent Jim my original review letter, today I did a quick review of, based on the updated plans. I actually did hear back from the applicant after they got copied on the review that I sent to you, all the planning board members, on a few things that I admittedly also missed. So I will correct those as I go through these. As far as the use, no use has been specified for this site. It is not required that a use be specified, but it is useful for the planning board when considering items. It would have to be a use that's permitted in the light industrial commercial district. There are, for variances, there are four different variances that are currently before the Board of Appeals. Those were heard last night. No decision was made. They relate to the location of the building on the lots relative to the 200 foot setback, its proximity to the private road, and also some wetlands variances that were requested. Item three is regarding the existing site plan. There is a little bit of missing information. The applicant's engineer did respond to this letter stating that they had provided all of the information. My one comment that they really need to provide is the gas line easement that is on the lower portion of this lot. It doesn't cover the lot itself. It's just would be useful to have. For item four, and these are kind of getting into the nuanced requirements of your site plan regulations. This is site plan review 1715. Building details have not been provided, other than the footprint itself. You do not have any architectural renderings. You don't have height, you don't have elevation, you don't have layout. Item D regarding parking calculations, parking locations are shown, but there was no parking calculations supplied. Item C, which is landscaping detail, there was some detail shown as far as some bushes that are being proposed in the southern facing portion of the lot. Admittedly, I missed the couple of little bushes that are shown at the front of the lot. So they have provided landscaping detail. Item D, which is lighting detail, sheet four has a lighting note, and they did provide the cone of illumination. That's one of the very specific requirement. It would be useful to also have the candle foot there just to make sure that there's no light spilling onto adjacent properties, which there likely is not, given the limited amount of lighting. But that would be information that would be useful to add to that detail. Item three, or item E, which is dumpster detail, there is a dumpster shown on the site. It's sort of over near the stormwater pond on the eastern portion of the site. That is shown. I admittedly missed where the dumpster was shown. Snow detail, there is a note on here showing that the snow detail is over by the stormwater pond, sort of near where Jim is showing on the cursor. My comment regarding that is that's actually shown right next to the wetlands district. I would recommend that be moved to outside of the wetlands conservation district. And items G and H were really that if there were any easements required or if there were any sound devices proposed, that those would need to be shown. But it doesn't appear that those are proposed. So I would still recommend that this is not a complete application. It is much more complete than what was submitted last time. I really think the main things that are missing are the building detail.
Can I interject? This is Bill Gregsek again. This, this parcel still has several steps to go before we get to the site plan. As you well know, for us to put up any kind of building on this lot, we're looking for a total of four variances for that lot. And we had a ZBA meeting last night, and that was continued until next month. And so what I'd like to do is request that, and this is also dependent upon the subdivision. We got a couple steps to go. What I'd like to do is have a continuance. And that'll give me a little bit of time to straighten up the few things that Jen is looking for and make some changes with the snow storage and things like that. So, and add a rendering of the building. So with that in mind, I'd request a continuance.
Thank you. So Jen, because he's requesting it, do we just take it? Do we have discussion or?
You can certainly still discuss it. You will need to have a motion to continue it. One thing I will point out, I think there were a few minor comments from the town engineer. I don't think there was anything significant, with the one exception of maybe the driveway entrance. So there are other comments, not from just me, but I think there were just a few small ones from the town engineer the planning board should also consider. That does not have to deal with the continuance or not.
I have a question. When was the ZBA hearing going to be? Was it the 7th or the 14th of September?
Second, second Monday. It can't be the 7th. That's Labor Day.
Oh, it's Labor Day.
So it's the 14th.
So I'd like to make a motion to continue this to our, our September 15th meeting. This is Annie.
Hi, Annie.
I would like to interject at this point. We do not have a meeting scheduled for September 15th because that's Election Day.
Thank you, Roger.
Kind of important. So when will our next meeting be Roger? In September?
September 22nd.
September 22nd.
So I'll amend my motion to have our hearing and, uh, to continue this to September 22nd.
Second. Mike Andrews, second. Any discussion? Okay, um, I guess you can call the roll, Jim, to continue to the September 15th meeting.
September 22nd.
22nd.
22nd, sorry.
Ms. Estabrook.
Aye.
Mr. Andrews.
Aye.
Mr. Foot.
Aye.
Mr. White.
Aye.
Ms. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Kronlick.
Aye.
Mr. Zalinski.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Okay, so this will be continued till September 22nd.
I have one last question, Coleman McDonough.
Coleman, yeah.
If, you know, because we have ZBA and planning board running simultaneous, million-dollar question, if, if the board saw that, you know, um, the planning board, you know, that everything was met, and, um, you know, all the lighting, all the renderings, everything, and you voted, could you vote to accept this lot and this building, subject to the variance being approved by ZBA, just like any other subject to, you know, DOT or AOT, as, you know, a condition?
Andrew, this is Jen, and the answer is yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Jen. Okay. So, I think we're gonna get Roger back.
So with, excuse me.
Oh, sorry.
Just, just with, with this, right, I know that we already had the vote, with that said, can we move the date up to? Yeah.
No. No, you already voted, sorry.
You, you can't amend the vote?
No.
So I just got extended a month and a half, when I could have had a meeting in two weeks, if Bill corrects everything that Jennifer needs, and?
Sandy, this is Jen, you guys actually could have a vote to rescind the previous vote, if you so chose. Someone would have to motion to rescind the vote, it would have to be seconded, and then you'd have to vote to approve the rescinding, then you'd have to vote again to have a new date of the hearing.
A comment, this is from Annie.
Go ahead.
I would feel more comfortable having ZBA's decision on this thing, um, before we spend more time on it, that's just, I'm sorry, it's gonna be a, a month and a half delay for the applicant, but I think that we need ZBA's action first, that's my personal opinion.
Right, this is Sandra too, there was other open questions, two notches that, so I'm in favor of just keeping it till that September meeting. Okay, so I guess we're done with this, and we're gonna move on to our number three, I think? I'm good?
Thank you very much Sandy.
Thank you.
I will resume the chair, and for, for the time being, Bob is no longer a, a voting member, cause I'm taking my position.
Okay.
Item three, John Kelleher of Newton Hampshire requests a public hearing on a minor site plan, village district at One South Main, Newton Hampshire, the property reference is tax map 11, block six, lot seven. Would Mr. Kelleher like to make a presentation of his application?
Excuse me Roger, this is Sandra. Roger? Um, I am a relative of, uh, in a butter, so I think I would like to recuse myself from being a voting member on this application, although I like my comments in the thing, but?
Well, yeah, I, I, if you choose to recuse yourself, then you still have the option of, as a resident, to make comments, you, you, i- if you don't have an opportunity to, to participate in the deliberation of the board, but, but you can clearly make comments during the public comment section. In, in that case, I'll put Bob back on as the voting member for, uh, for this item. Mr. Kelleher, would you like to, uh, make a presentation?
Well, I'm really hoping that you guys can hear me, this is my first time with Zoom, and I'm not honestly sure if I've done anything right at all.
I can hear you.
Okay. Thank you Sandra, because that was part of my, um, speech that I'm about to give now. May I continue?
All right, ahead.
My name is John Kelleher, I am here today to request approval for a vending cart location at my private residence at One South Main Street. It's no, it's worth noting that I also have several hundred feet of frontage on Highland as well. I have reviewed the objections to my application, and I wish to respond to them accordingly. I have several abutters, however, it appears as though only one person has submitted multiple letters on behalf of others. None of the letters are signed, nor are they notarized. I question their authenticity and legality of being submitted as objections. In one letter, it is clearly stated that it is written by someone else. I would object to this being considered as an objection and removed from the file. Mrs. Peterson and Mr. Estabrook's letters were used similar, similar words and language that it feels as though they were written by the same person. And of course, now I was going to ask for Sandra to be reclusive, but you've taken care of that matter. I have broken down, uh, into concerns and responses of few things. Village district prohibit, prohibitions and limitations of such, this is using your language. The village district is real, however, page 20 of the zoning ordinance laws and regulations, section 12, or XX22, XXII, sorry, village district zone uses, and this was added on March of 2011, it is clear that I meet the spirit of operation within the village district, specifically section 12, subsection A, which states, "Provide the opportunity for integration of limited commercial, professional, and service-oriented businesses that use those existing residential and civic use, uses situated in the Newton Village District." Subsection C, which states, "Provide the opportunity for integration of limited commercial, professional, and service-oriented businesses using," I'm sorry, users with those existing residential and civic uses situated in the Newton Village District. Subsection D, which states, "Encourage a complementary mix of residential and non-residential uses intended to support each other while affording employment opportunities and modest expansion of the town's tax base." And even subsection F, which states, "Ensure permitted non-residential uses are compatible with continued residential uses in the village district." Furthermore, under permitted uses within the village district, it is incredibly clear that single-use dwelling and accessory buildings, A, C, home occupation and home-based businesses subject to the provisions of section seven of this ordinance. And furthermore, that the list provides has several examples of permitted uses, up to and including personal service establishments primarily engaged in providing services, including the care of a person or their personal goods or apparel. These services include, but are not limited to, number nine, food service establishments. The ordinance is clear, is clearly, there is, uh, the ordinance is clearly there to encourage residents to allow to open in the areas outlined within the district. And as a resident and a taxpaying citizen, I have that right. In the spirit of the ordinance, I would provide the opportunity for the integration of limited commercial, professional, and service-oriented businesses, business uses with existing residential and civic uses. I was shocked to see other residents try to use the village district as a reason to object, when the ordinance is quite literally to support the opposite of what their purpose was. I would like to address Mr. Estabrook's libel letter about, and I quote, "Litter has been, has always been an issue. At no time has any litter been an issue, nor has trash, nor gloves, or other been disposed of in any other way than securely in a barrel, not in the streets, and certainly not in Mr. Estabrook's yard or property. A different neighbor who has not objectively formally had asked us about a napkin, it was determined and agreed upon that this was not even a napkin my cart uses. I have not been informed of any other situations regarding trash magically or allegedly floating away. I cannot be held responsible for litter bugs that have nothing to do with me. The amount of Dunkin' Donuts trash on 108 is immeasurable. And yet, they continue to operate their business with no other interference from others. My hot dog cart will be so, operated solely by myself. I am certified, I passed the health checks and proper operating standards. I provide proper disposal containers, and there are no plans for customer seating. There's plenty of off-street parking and safe parking available. I also have all state and local governments required permits and insurance for food cart, for this food service cart. Mr. Estabrook and I have disjointedly, have, have had a disjointed history going back to high school, and I feel his complaint is of a personal nature, not one of concerned town residents. It shocked me that Mr. Estabrook would complain about my business and alleged trash, when as you can, you might be aware, Estabrook's garage is right down the street. You can clearly see that the building has oil, gas, and other chemical spills on the ground and is in the road, potentially contaminating the watershed. It appears as though Mr. Estabrook's appears to be confused as to in charge in this town. He has evidently made decisions about where I and perhaps others should operate their businesses. I do not understand what authority, if any, Mr. Estabrook has to suggest where to operate my business, or why he would suggest that I operate with a taco truck. This is none of his business. He has no authority to relegate me to another location of his choosing. At this time, I will once again voice that there is a conflict of interest, and, sorry, that was already taken care of, by just reading my letter, so. Mrs. Nolan addressed the possibility that my site could grow larger than the approved space. I have no intention of doing such without prior approval, should I desire to do so. I have no intention of placing large permanent signs on my property, just regular advertising signs. She also made a statement regarding threats that were made online. A local resident mentioned throwing whatever, hot dogs in a jest, and it was in no way an actual threat against anyone or their property. Facebook is full of trolls. Mrs. Peterson has made several outlandish accusations, and I'll try to address those as well. She stated concern over businesses coming to the area, but it is clearly encouraged, yeah, clearly encouraged in the March 2020 amendments. Outlandish concern number one, that this would lead to expansion or proliferation of other such concessions or permanent yard sales in the village district. There's no law against this, and I fail to see her point. The road is not Route 95 during rush hour. Not only can people park off the street, but there's plenty of people walking, jogging, and biking that can get a cold refreshment or snack on their way to do so, whatever. Again, I fail to see her point. This is in no way in which I could surmise that this small friendly business would somehow decrease property values. In fact, the opposite, I have done some research, and I can find a, I cannot find a single instance of a food vendor leading to decreased in property, property value of any kind. The erosion of character of the village district, quite frankly, this is what the district ordinance were made to support. Once again, I fail to see the point, point of this item that Mrs. Peterson mentioned. But I also would like to highlight that it is quickly, I'm sorry, quite obviously, that this is simply slinging mud at the wall to see what sticks. There is no validity to this or any of these concerns. If there were concerns about erosion of character of the village district, I would ask Mrs. Peterson what her thoughts are of the churches, convenience stores, and other food establishments, and other commercial businesses within the surrounding district, including her friend Estabrook's garage that we already discussed. Of course, it looks like that wouldn't pass a health or safety inspection any day of the week. My hot dog cart was enjoyed and supported by a large majority of this town. It became a favorite lunch spot of those who walked and drove by my home on a daily bas- basis. The townspeople's support was shown to me, in fact, that they helped me raise the money needed to allow me to continue to, with this process. I would also like to add that there are several small businesses in, in and around this town that are similar. One person sells soil, another vegetables, another plants, and at least half a dozen lemonade stands at any given time. It would be extremely precedent, prejudicial to allow these businesses to operate, but deny me when I adhere to every rule and regulation and have been for more than five years. I am doing my best to play by the town rules, however, with that said, I am not aware of any rules that would prevent me from having a barbecue every day. So in closing, I have seven, eight abutters, you received two letters that stated they were against my opening of my property, and that addressed concerns over my size, but were asked to be rejected for the reasons I stated. And those do not represent the majority of my abutters, and I respectfully request an approval at this time with no, uh, record, requirements. I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Prowden, do you have any comments to give on the?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, before we move along, uh, Mr. Kelleher, can you email that to me for attachment to the minutes?
Uh, I'm sorry, I keep, uh, I keep.
Can I get a copy, can I get a copy of the statement that you read?
Yep, I can, um, I just keep muting, muting and unmuting, so that's why it's taking me a little bit long. I will be able to do that, but I do not believe it will be during this meeting, will that be?
No, 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 I don't need it now, but I need it for for when I do the minutes.
No problem.
Hey Jen, do you have, uh, your comments?
I do have comments, but I think it would be very useful if Mr. Keller would actually just describe, based on the application he submitted, what he is looking to do. I understand this has already existed, but for him to explain, what is he looking to do? And then I'd be happy to go through my comments, but I think that would be useful for the board, for myself even, um, so, if he'd be willing to do that.
You all have the land use application form that I filled out?
Correct.
All right. What, uh, the, the original picture that I was using, uh, was supposed to be used during the covert timeframe. uh, was supposed to be used during the covert timeframe when everything was so super tight and very, very minimal as to what could be done. So the, the picture that I used was of a drive-through that I have now substituted or updated with parking on the grass. A cart that is, uh, well, if you're looking at the, at one of those pictures there, um, the, the cart would be located near the tree with the car or the tree that looks like it's going into a, growing out of a car. The, um, the parking would be in front of that. And because my driveway is, um, can be used in this manner of exit, oh yeah, I can't get to that picture, but I'm gonna try. Uh, I can't see it anyway. Um, yeah, that's the picture right there, please. Uh, you'll see that, how do I get to that picture? Oh, there it is. You'll see that I already have cart right there. And, uh, that cart is set at more than 35 feet away from the road, which it was one of the stipulations that needed to be done. And in, if I park, if people park anywhere in the lined area that says parking to T A R, uh, you'll notice that there's plenty of, yep, from there, all the way over to the T A R on the, on the left. You'll notice that there's plenty of parking for four, four vehicles, which is usually not very busy in this area. We're not asking for, uh, parking for 15. We're asking for parking for, uh, four cars at the most because I only get one to two customers every half hour. Uh, it's not a really big business, and it's certainly not a brick and mortar business. So I have updated that picture and I'll send, I'll send that picture, which is basically the exact same thing, just not with any lines on it. I'll send that to, um, to you guys too. So does that answer your question, Jen?
It, it gives me an idea, yes. So unless there's anything else, Roger, I can go sort of through my comments.
Yeah, please go through your comments.
Okay, um, I'm gonna start with that. Based on what Mr. Keller just said, um, if the proposal is, it sounds like he would like to change what was actually proposed slightly. Um, that does need to be presented to the board, and I think my comments I'm gonna go through are still applicable, but the, it's, I strongly recommend the planning board have an updated picture of what Mr. Keller is proposing prior to approving anything. But I'm still gonna go through my comments. Um, as this hot, this property is located in the village district, it's currently a single-family home, which is allowed in the village district. Mixed use is allowed in the village district, and food service establishments are also allowed in the village district. I do think the use is allowed. This is not a home-based business or a home occupation. Simply because it takes place outside of the home, it does not qualify for those uses, even though that home-based business or occupation is allowed in the village district. I think this falls best under a food service establishment. Um, because it's a non-residential use, it does require site plan approval. Now, based on the scale, it seems as though this may actually qualify for your minor site plan review, and I've noted all of the appropriate references in my letter. Um, but under your policies and procedural manual, one of the things with a minor site plan application is that the board does need to determine if the impacts of the proposed project present greater than the minimum impact. Um, if it, if it poses greater than a minimum impact, then the application is not eligible for a minor site plan. And by impact, what they're talking about is are there impacts, um, including but not limited to health, safety, general welfare of the surrounding neighborhood and region, and impacts to the environment and natural resources. So I do want the board to keep that in mind as well as, does this qualify for minor or not? That is a decision, a determination I recommend you also make. So specific comments I have, and these are based on what was submitted. I understand they might change just a little bit. Um, I'm a little bit concerned about the traffic circulation that is being proposed. Um, because if a secondary driveway or driving path is proposed near the intersection of Highland and 108, because 108 is a state road, it will require a DOT driveway permit, or it's possible DOT may state that nothing is required. I do not believe that would be the case, but I would recommend the board actually require the DOT driveway permit be obtained as any condition. Um, as far as parking, and Mr. Keller, thank you for alluding to how many parking spots you were, um, looking for, for spots of, given the size of the business. Um, I would recommend on your next iteration of this plan, you indicate how many spots you are having. Um, the reason for that is in part because of its location next to 108, and it's, it was a little difficult to tell on your picture, and I understand it was a picture. Um, you would not be allowed to park within the right-of-way of Route 108. It's a state rule, you're not allowed to do that, and Newton's own site plan regulations require that you offer off-street parking. Um, the next comment was about any waste. That includes either both just trash, um, just where would it even be located? I'm not gonna get into any accusations of the butters of, um, littering or not, but just showing the location of where any trash would actually be dealt with. Um, the other comment is regarding the actual food preparation. I don't know the operation of a hot dog cart, but if there is any cleanup that would actually require you to use your residential septic facilities for dealing with any of, um, that food prep, you would want, the board should make sure that the septic facilities are adequate to deal with that. Um, dealing with a business versus a residential use, it may be minimum enough that there is not an issue, but that would wanna be verified, um, by both the building inspector and through D E S, through their septic permitting process. Number four is signage. No signage was mentioned, um, regarding this plan. I know, I, I think I saw a few signs in one of the butter, letters regarding signs that you do have, Mr. Keller. On a next iteration of this plan, showing where that sign is going to be located, even if it's just a temporary sign that you bring out each day, would be important to know both its size and location. Having a sign within the right-of-way of the, um, state road would not be allowed. Um, and also wanting to make sure that it's not going to impede on any safety of traffic. Given the size, that's probably not the case, but you would not be allowed to have a sign within the right-of-way. Um, it sounds, my next comment was regarding if there was any customer seating proposed. It doesn't sound like that's the case. If that were to change, you do need to show where that seating would be proposed. Health regulations do require if you have a sit-down location, you have to provide, um, toilet facilities. Um, and last but not least, I do think you indicated in your plan that you would be operating seven days a week. I would recommend that the board discuss the actual hours of operation that would be utilized. I'm assuming it's not 24 hours a day, but, um, that should be clarified. So that's all of my comments.
Can I, this is John, can I, uh, can I address this?
Yes, go, go ahead.
Um, yes, there was no, uh, as I stated, there was no circular, uh, circular driveway, so that basically should not be any more problems with an, with the DOT. Uh, those are just now off-the-road parking spots. Um, the prep work, I'd love to bring anybody from the planning board over to see exactly what is entailed in both setup, operation, and teardown, or it, it's not really the right word, but I'm, I'm using it, uh, in order to see, uh, exactly how it's operated, because it operates on a water-based system. There is no, there is nothing that, uh, like oil or anything to that effect that is used. Um, I understand the signage area that was really not one of those added, uh, things that was part of the, the plan, the land use application form. I don't believe it was on there. And, um, we did, I did mention the hours of operation, which can be changed, uh, not only for seasonal, but also, uh, discussed with the planning board. I don't believe that any of the, uh, points that I needed for you guys to make a decision today warrant you guys having to change for two more weeks. This should not go on for two more weeks. And, uh, as far as I know, nothing has been proposed that would hinder a decision today.
Uh, the, the, that you're proposing. This is going to be, so, so people would, I, I, are you going to do anything to that grassy area, or are you just gonna say, people come park here?
There will probably be, there will probably be signage to let them know where to park and how far to go with their cars or vehicles. But everybody in Newton, uh, on 108, uh, backs out into 108 with no problems, and I don't see a, a problem with that, but they can use, uh, with an angled driveway, um, parking, angled parking in my, on my grass, and there's only two or three customers every half hour that they could use my driveway to pull out, seeing both ways in ac, in accurately understanding whether cars are coming or going, or even coming off of Highland Street so that there is no problems or even, uh, a possibility of, uh, an accident.
Well, the, the, i- i- in the zoning ordinance for the, the village district, one of the, one of the, uh, items is within 50 feet of the right-of-way, all parking shall be located on the side and/or rear of the existing proposed building. You, you're, you're basically out in front. You're, you're, and you're right off of the right-of-way. I, I don't think you're, 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 your parking is a, to me, a, a big problem.
I don't think that you, uh, I don't think you looked at the, the picture properly to understand where my cart would be. I'm not right, I'm not right out front. I'm more than 50 feet away from the, the state yellow line, which is the indication.
I'm not talking about the locate, I'm not talking about the location of the parked car, not the location of your cart.
So people who have driveways cannot, um, cannot park in the driveways? Is that what you're saying?
I, I'm saying for, for the use of a business in, in, in the village district.
Go on.
The parking has to be to the rear or, or, or side of the building, uh, uh, and not within 50 feet of the right-of-way.
Would you state the ordinance that that's, uh, mandated?
Yeah, if, if the, it's, the, our ordinance is section 23.
Yep.
One M.
Say that one more time.
But it's 20, X I I I, one M.
Section 23, one M.
Do any other members of the board have any comments?
Uh, this is Annie. Um, I am all for entrepreneurial pursuits and for people having businesses and for use in the village district, but I am very concerned with this picture that was sent by one of your butters, um, showing lots of signage, multiple umbrellas, um, lots and lots of different pieces of equipment. And I'm looking at that same section that Roger was just talking about, um, section 23. In this case, I'm looking at 1E, which says, "Outdoor storage and/or display of non-agricultural goods, products, materials, and equipment shall be prohibited." So it looks to me like that's outdoor equipment and, um, in, on display. And I have a concern that that's in violation. I wonder if there's some way that it could be located, maybe with, on a porch or, or something, you know, within the structure which is less intrusive, perhaps to the view and vista of the others in the district.
This is John, can I rebut?
Yeah, go, go ahead, John.
Uh, those pictures were sent, uh, by, um, a webcam illegally placed by one of my butters, uh, to show things, uh, that were in the beginning as we were starting off. Uh, that was changed the moment that, uh, we were asked to move backwards, and we moved back to, uh, to appease not only, um, the, I don't know if it was a, a request by the, by the town, but we moved everything back and there, and it was just the cart, the, uh, just the hot dog cart. I don't have any pictures of that really to show you. Um, but I can find one and send one to you. That's not a problem. I just believe that, uh, um, the pictures that you're seeing are well in the beginning of when we started to, oh, excuse me, uh, to operate this cart. And so that, as, as you can well imagine, these things can be, uh, scaled down, or they can be adjusted just to handle a cart, which is what I basically stated in, in a previous conversation, uh, to the board.
Annie, this is Jen. Um, just with the ordinance that you were just reading, I do wanna let you know that a second sentence in there does allow for some outdoor storage, but it has to be with an approved site plan. So some is allowed. It just has to be approved by the planning board.
Okay. So I think, I, I guess I would really need to see a specific plan of where, where the, what would be where to, to really, I, I'd need to see that parking. I'd need to see some more specifics. I'm, I'm afraid I can't vote for this at this point.
There any other comments from the board?
Yeah, this is, uh, Mike. I just, uh, I'm, I need a, I need a much better drawing. I don't, it doesn't have to be a survey, but a, a clearly drawn plan that shows me where the parking, where the driveway, uh, where everything associated this will be located, uh, so I can have any idea how to, uh, how to look at what wants to be, what's being asked for.
Roger, this is Jen. Um, just one, that you have at this point not taken jurisdiction. Um, I would recommend that prior to considering that, you consider whether this actually meets the minor site plan requirement, or I'm sorry, fits with the ability to apply for the minor site plan.
So basically, then you're talking about the question of whether this has minimal impact or, or not?
Correct.
Okay, I, i- i- invite members of the board to, 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 uh, comment on that?
Make a motion that we consider it a minor site plan application. And that's a motion. That's Annie.
Is there a second to that?
This is Jim White, I'll second.
Okay, any comments?
I have a comment, this is Annie. Um, I think that it's going to be crucial to see, um, the sketch and layout in order to be able to accept this application for a minor site plan. in order to be able to accept this application for a minor site plan. I just think that there's some things the applicant needs to help us with to be able to properly, as Mike laid out. I think really needs to be, we need some more information.
So basically, you're saying that it's, the application as presented is not complete? Because there isn't a good sketch of what is proposed?
Yes, that's correct. That we need a good sketch.
Yeah, this is Mike. I can't really even make the, to say that this is definitely minor without a better idea of what's going on. I believe it falls under that category, but I need some, I need some more information.
Can I make a question? Can I ask a question? Or is it still time for the board?
No, I was just going to open it to the public. So you can, you can go right ahead.
Could, and I believe it's probably going to be Jen who gives me the answer. I'm hoping I'm not insulting her by calling her Jen. That's the only name I have on my computer. Could you go over what the four items were that are required, that before you make a site plan, it has to, it has to, before you can even say that it has to be a minor site plan, what are the four requisites that need to be done before you can even say that it's a minor site plan?
Sure, give me just one second to look to that page.
I'm going to mute, by the way.
So, and this is for reference in the Planning Board's Policies and Procedures, Section 10C. "If the board determines that the impact of a proposed project presents a greater than minimum impact, the application shall not be eligible for a minor site plan review. Impacts that shall be considered include, but are not limited to, health, safety, and general welfare of the surrounding neighborhood and region, and impacts to the environment and natural resources." This is on page six of the Planning Board's Policies and Procedures.
So I have a question, Mr. Chairman. This is Annie.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Jen, is clarification on that. If we were to accept this as, to be considered as a minor site plan application, and, well, obviously, if we found that it didn't have those impacts and it seemed fine and the plan seemed fine and we approved it, that's one thing. But if we felt that the layout or proposal was going to have a detrimental effect on the welfare of the neighborhood and region, then we would vote no on it. I mean, then it would be not a good, or are we stuck voting no? Just, or, I'm not sure what parameters we would be limited by if we make a minor site plan application.
If you feel that to even make that determination, you need more information, you can certainly make that your decision.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, ready for a part of the...
I was just going to open the discussion of whether there should be a minor site plan to the public. Invite any members of the public who wish to comment to raise their hand and be recognized.
Okay, that sounds good.
Sandra, I can't find my button to raise my hand.
Well, it's all right. You can go right ahead and speak.
I don't want to butt in before anybody else.
Go ahead, Sandy.
Well, thank you. So under Section 23, Village District Zones Area Regulations, which was adopted in 2011, number one, it's restrictions and special provisions. So Annie talked about E, about storage and display of products or materials and equipment outside is prohibited. But also D, the one above that, it's drive-through service windows are prohibited. Now granted, this isn't a window, but it is a drive-through operation. So to me, I would think it would be covered under D, that drive-throughs are not prohibited. I know this is, I think, the first plan we've fallen under the village district rules. So...
Really, Sandy, at this point, we're still, we need to decide whether it's a minor site plan or not. And then we'll get into that issue. That's sort of a separate issue at this point. It's a matter of, does this meet the criteria to be a minor site plan?
So I, well, then I'll comment on that, that we've brought up a number of safety concerns to the public. So I would think that it would possibly fall under a minor site plan because there are a lot of safety issues that have been brought up.
Well, if there are a lot of safeties, then it wouldn't be a minor site plan. He'd have to do a full site plan with engineering.
What's the issues that were brought up?
Right, then maybe it's a major, not a minor.
Hey, Roger, this is Jen. Just, while I did recommend that you could make the determination on the minor or not, if you do feel you need more information, you can also ask for more information.
Before we make the determination?
Correct.
People, we're talking about a hot dog cart and three cows. This can't be that hard.
I've had my hand up for about an hour. Is it okay if I talk?
Yeah, go ahead.
Great, thanks. So Sandy, I'm unaware of any safety issues that are actually, have a foundation, aren't popsicle sticks that have been levied against Mr. Keller. So could you highlight maybe one of them and then address it?
I thought Roger said we weren't talking about that right now.
Well, you're using that as your, your, your path to get it to be a major versus a minor. So you're the one who opened the door.
Yeah, so that would be an appropriate time to talk about it, Sandy.
Oh, okay. Well, so the safety issue is pedestrian safety and traffic safety as far as going in and out of the establishment and how we're going to keep everyone safe.
So pedestrian safety, I would say that people are walking, biking, jogging, and driving down 108 and Highland on a daily basis with minimal issues.
And the question here is the level of additional traffic that your establishment would bring?
Sorry, Mr. Hamel, not my establishment, Mr. Keller's establishment. I believe, my opinion would be that, no, there is no feasible or reasonable way to assume that people grabbing hot dogs would increase traffic to a degree of having to have some kind of a site survey or some kind of a traffic analysis done. It would be a very minimal amount of traffic in that area. Mr. Keller isn't even required to provide parking. People could walk and, or park on Highland and walk. They could park at Rose Corner and walk. They could park at Amesbury and walk if they wanted to. So the parking thing and the safety, unless we're saying that 108 is unsafe to all pedestrian and driving traffic, I don't see it.
Could I ask you to identify yourself?
Yeah, my name is Mr. Brusso.
Thank you.
Hey, this is Bob Zalinski speaking.
Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah. The requirement for him to have a driveway on a high, on a state road, I mean, he has to get permission from the state. Would this be new if he can't get a permit even to have a driveway? And I don't believe circular driveways are allowed anymore. First, he'd need to get permission to get a driveway, you know, near that location. How many people have to be from the intersection?
Respectfully, Mr. Zalinski, he has a driveway on 108.
Yeah, the design has changed. We don't have a picture of his current design.
Oh. So he's coming off Highland now?
I do not believe so.
He's showing a driveway. Whether it's the picture he's showing here, where's the driveway coming off? If he comes off Highland, it's a state road. If he comes off Route 108, it's a state road. If they don't approve it because it's close to the intersection, what, I'm only asking, I mean, how can he be submitting this? If he hasn't got approval?
His driveway is already pre-existing on Route 108. There's also, again, to be clear, Mr. Keller doesn't have to provide parking or a driveway for anybody to use to get to his hot dog stand.
If he is going to operate a business in the village district, he will have to provide adequate parking.
So what the town needs is the parking to be at the rear of the, within 50 feet of the right of way or parking. So if he decides to let people park on the rear of his property, would that be in compliance with what the town is looking for?
I have no, I cannot picture how he's going to redesign his lot. And when I see it, I would be able to make more of a judgment. Jen, you've been asking to speak. Go ahead.
Yeah. Just regarding any driveway, even though there is an existing driveway, it is for a single-family residential use, and that can continue. Any change to a driveway does require a new DOT or an amended DOT driveway permit, if it's the single driveway. For a new driveway permit, they would have to get a secondary driveway permit. And the proximity to the intersection would certainly be something that DOT would consider.
If the board ready to vote on, I believe it was Annie's motion, that this is suitable for a, yeah.
Minor site.
Minor site plan. Thank you. Are we ready to vote? Jim, will you call the roll? Read the motion and call the roll.
The motion is by Annie Collier is to consider this a minor site plan, seconded by James White. Mr. Hamel?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Foote?
No.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Andrews?
No.
Mr. Kronlick?
Aye.
Mr. Zalinski?
No.
It passes for to three.
Okay. Now, the next question is, are we going to take jurisdiction? Do we, and do we, do we have all of the information we need to make a determination? And I think obviously, we don't because we don't have a plan. He said it's changed, but he hasn't provided us with, and I would really suggest that rather than a couple of squiggly lines on a picture, that we get more of something, a hand drawn by you, but still something that, that, you know...
Well, I have a picture right now. The problem is, I don't know, as I stated in the beginning, I don't know how to transmit it to you guys. Is there a way to put it on this screen so that you all can see it? Or are you...
We're going to have to look at it and study it anyway. So, but, you know, so I don't think we're going to be able to make a determination tonight without having that information. Also, personally, I would want to get some input from the road agent about the, about what this will have, impact this will have on the road. And though he doesn't control driveways because they're state roads, I still want to give him an opportunity to comment on this.
This is Mike. I have a couple of other things I'd like to add just to help the applicant along is, I think one thing was forgotten here. This, once it goes in to apply for a business, then it changes everything from what it was in the residential structure. So the driveway is not the same anymore. The, you know, nothing is the same. So please just look at it from that. And I think that'll make things simpler. Other than what was already mentioned, I think the hours that you mentioned was, were something like sunrise to sunset, seven days a week. That's not going to work. So I'd like some hard and fast numbers of opening and closing. Yes, that can change seasonally, but not just sunrise, sunset, or whatever was in there. Thank you.
Michael, as I stated in my letter that I'll be sending you guys a copy of, that also can be adjusted per suggestions of the planning board. I know that I wrote that when I, because I didn't have specific timeframes. I don't believe that, I don't believe that that might be a valid point at this time because as I stated in my letter, it can be adjusted.
Thanks. I just, I'd like a starting point that what you would, what you'd like to at least try to have. And then if we see that we need to change it, that we can discuss it with you.
Guys, if you don't mind me speaking, this is Laura. I'm the one that helped John raise the money needed to continue this thing we're doing now. I just wanted to let you know that I'll help John get the stuff to you guys that you need, the picture, to figure out everything that you need to see in black and white so that we can get this process finished because this has just gone on for way too long.
I mean, it's probably the best not to just, you know, superimpose something on a picture, but actually just sort of try to draw out a plan.
Right, now I have access to tax cards. I know how to access them all and things like that. We'll be able to give you something a little more sustainable than just a picture from the neighbor's security camera that's staring at his house.
Right. Okay. Are there any other comments from anyone?
I'd like to reiterate the need for a signage plan.
Annie will take care of that. He doesn't have any big signage plans. All it is, is that flag he had out there before. That's literally like the only thing he has. So we'll definitely get that to you.
That's great.
I just want to note too, for you guys, he has no plan on building a building. There will be no public restrooms, no porta-potties on site. There will be no need for any of it. It's simply a walk-up business. Order what you want to eat and take it to go. There'll be no sitting down, no hanging out, no, none of that kind of stuff.
So I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Can you just hold off for just one second?
Okay.
One of the other things that I would suggest that you put in your plan because it has been brought up several times is, you know, how are you going to handle the waste issues?
Right, there will be minimal waste with something like this. It will literally be food that wasn't used, napkins, things like that. There's going to be no oil or anything like that. There's no fryolators. There's no, none of that. It's literally just a grill that cooks the hot dogs and stuff.
But just so that it is addressed in writing?
Right, completely understand.
Okay. Now, Annie, you're on.
I want to make a motion to continue this to our next meeting.
Is there a second? I second Jim White.
That would be the 25th.
Jim, can you call the roll?
One thing before I do that. Laura, do you have a last name?
Yeah, it's A V H A D. I'm Stephen Cushing's niece.
Okay, I just, I need it for the minutes.
Yeah, no worries.
A V H A D.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Yes, Mr. Chair, I am ready to call the vote. Mr. Hamel? Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Foote?
Aye.
Mr. White.
Aye.
Mr. Andrews.
Aye.
Mr. Kronlick.
Aye.
Mr. Zalinski.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can I ask one question, please? John Keller?
Go ahead, John.
Um, I did not receive proper notifications of this being done on Zoom. As far as I had all my paperwork together, I was supposed to be at the town hall today at 7:00. Will this, for, for the next time we meet, will I receive proper paperwork and exactly what is required, including codes and numbers and everything, please?
The, the notice that you received said that they, i- i- if the emergency continued, it would be held electronically. The, on the agenda, we, we post this information for the codes, et cetera, on, on the planning board website, the agenda's posted there, and all of the codes on how to access it are, are posted there. And in all likelihood, yes indeed, I, from, from what Governor Sununu has said, the state of emergency is going to continue for quite a while. So I would expect that in two weeks. Well, for that matter, the state of emergency that has been approved already is going to be on that meeting. So definitely, the next meeting will be held by Zoom. And I expect it will be the same codes that we use for this meeting, but that will be posted on the planning board website, definitely more than 24 hours before the meeting.
Mr. Chair, question?
Yes.
Okay, we cannot, we have to stop, and the select board does the same thing. Stop blaming the governor for us not meeting. He said today, he, he upped his ante, that 100 people inside, as long as you're social distancing, wearing masks, you can have meetings. He never said any town cannot meet. So we need, we need to take the vote tonight and bring it to the select board, saying the planning board would like to meet live ASAP, because we're allowed to, we're not restricted to. It's up to the individuals, and then of course, the select board has the final say.
It's up to the select board whether we can meet or not, i- i- in, in the building. They control town hall, not, not the planning board.
Okay, then we can meet live then, is, don't, don't be blaming the governor. He has no say in it.
Well, he, he allows us to meet electronically.
But he also allows you to meet live, too.
I- i- if, if the select board opens the town hall.
That's what I just said, Roger.
Right.
You just said the select board doesn't, doesn't dictate to when the planning.
No, no, the, 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 definitely does. They, they dictate when, when, when town hall will open.
So we should, we should take the vote tonight before we recess, and say, we want to meet live, and we bring it to the select board, and say, we want to meet live under the guidelines of the state, we're allowed to.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll bring that up a little bit later in the meeting.
Okay.
Hey, Roger.
Yes.
This is Jen, just one thing for Mr. Keller. Jim, what is the date that you need information in for the planning board packets? I think that might be useful for Mr. Keller.
It would need to be in the office by 1:00 on Thursday, August 20th.
Thank you very much, we've got that.
Okay, that, that ends the discussion of the Keller application. Next, we're moving to Board Business and Correspondence. The, the first item is the cost of the town engineer to review the design review plans for Lot 114273. At the last meeting, you voted to have the engineer do a review of the design review. Because it was a design review, there is no need for money for that. And need to decide whether, what, what, what you want to do about it. Did you get a, a, an answer from Mike?
Actually, at 8:46 this evening, he sent an email to me that he missed the email I sent to him over a week ago requesting a cost estimate. And there's nothing included in there. Today, I had sent him, just before the meeting, asked him if he had the, it prepared that I needed it for tonight. That was his response.
So, Annie, I think it was you who had looked to, to get this done. I don't know how, how you want to proceed.
You speaking to me?
Yes.
I think that the, the applicant had said at our last meeting that he was happy to, he would really like to have it, and that he was happy to pay for it. So, I mean, seems like, that's what I heard him say.
We can't have it done until we have the money in hand.
So we need to, we need to get the invoice and then ask the applicant, affirm, get the applicant's money in, and then do it, right?
Would be a possibility. I, 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 I really, I, I am bringing this up as an administrative matter. I don't really want to get involved in a discussion of what should be done. I mean, it's up to the other members of the board.
Roger, this is Jen. One item for the board members to consider is that a town can always seek consultant or an expert advice on a matter within reason, and then charge that fee to the applicant. I know Newton typically does require the, the NEPR accounts as a way to more easily ensure that gets paid, but there's nothing under state law that requires it to be paid upfront. I don't know if Newton may have its own regulations that require that, as a select board perhaps, but under state law, you do not have to have the money upfront.
I couldn't hear the last, you, you tailed off at the, at the last part, Jen, I couldn't hear what you said.
Sorry, under state law, you do not have to require the money upfront. You can simply invoice the applicant after the fact. Newton, at, Newton's select board may have a regulation that does not allow for that, but under state law, you do not have to have the money upfront.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, just to dog it.
I can research this, the, in the 20 years I was on the board, we have never done, we've never hired an engineer or a consultant without having the money in advance, and we were always told that that was a requirement of the NEPR. One of the problems that we have is that if a bill comes in, it would be paid out of the planning board's operating budget. However, the town does not have a methodology for, to recoup that money if it's paid, when the applicant reimburses us. When the applicant reimburses us, the money then goes into the general fund. So, since we do not have a line in our, a line item in our budget to take funds out of, we would be continually depleting the operating budget each time a manifest comes in. And that was the reason for creating the NEPR account, is it's an escrow account, where people put money in, and then they get the money returned at the end of the project.
So, this is Annie. So are you saying that the NEPR account for this applicant could not be used to pay the engineer?
The NEPR account for this applicant could be used if there was anything left in it. However, this account has been, I would have to actually get out the file folder, and this is why I tried to explain earlier, this is done at the end of project. This, for the design review, there was an application fee which went to the town, and I believe it was $500 was placed in NEPR. From that, from that $500 so far has been extracted the, the, the cost of the legal ad, which I believe was $122. There was $326 worth of a butter notices that went out.
So it's pretty well exhausted.
Exactly. But that, that is, that they paid in what is required by the town regulations. There is a specific, hold on just a second, I'll tell you exactly what it is. Yes, it's a $250 application fee that goes to the town, and the escrow deposit is $500. So there is nothing left in, really in the NEPR account. You know, there, there may be $30 to $40 left.
Is there a mechanism if, to hire the, find out how much the engineer will cost, collect it from, into the NEPR account, and then pay the engineer to do it?
Yeah, I, I sent an email the Thursday after our last, your last meeting to the engineer, asking for an estimate so that I would know what to be able to present to the board, for you to be able to say, yes, the applicant will have to pay in $375.
Okay, so we would, so we would have to say a specific, we would have to authorize you to bill the applicant a specific amount? Or could we authorize you to bill the applicant the amount that the engineer will charge, and then to go ahead and hire the engineer? Do we have that option?
You can do it two ways. You can either, if the engineer comes back and says it's gonna be a specific amount or estimate, you can authorize that the applicant prepay that into the NEPR account. Or you can say, this is going to be a longer-term, ongoing exchange of information, and we don't know exactly what it is. So you can ask the applicant to deposit X number of dollars into the NEPR account, and when it reaches a certain level of depletion, then they will have to top it back up. Those are the two ways that we have done it in the past.
Okay, well, I'm gonna make a motion that we go with option A, which is that you find out from the engineer, the estimate, how much it will be, ask the applicant for that money when it comes in, hire the engineer, and we move forward on that one thing that the applicant has requested and said he would pay for.
Can, can I ask a question, Sandra?
Go ahead, Sandra.
So, are we talking about a bill to review the design plan? Because, right, so, like Jennifer, I just was reading the minutes from last week, or last time, and we discussed this, and even Jennifer said that the town engineer typically would not look at the design review plan. But when the plan is submitted, now that we have a plan submitted to us, and we would do a NEPR account on that formal submittal, then the town engineer is gonna look at it anyway. So I don't see why he should look at it at the design stage, when he's gonna look at it when the formal thing is presented anyway.
Point of order, can we have a second or not before we discuss the motion?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Who was that?
It was Edwin.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on the motion?
I would like to say that the reason I'm suggesting this is that the one thing that was in the minutes and was discussed last time is that while Jen did say that it's unusual to have, that for a plan of this scope, it isn't that far out of line, it might be a good idea. And the applicant said that he would really prefer to be, to have it done. Since it's something he ends up paying for, and he feels it would be a benefit to his working forward with us on trying to get a viable plan together, it seems to me that it's in the public interest for us to authorize the engineer to be hired.
Any other discussion?
Well, I'll just reiterate that in the meantime, he's put a plan in front of us, that now the town engineer can look at, once we take jurisdiction of that plan. So he didn't wait for our input, he's presented a plan, so he'll just have to wait.
A different project.
That's, that's actually not what he's done, it's just a design plan that he's put before us. He has not put a plan for a jurisdiction, it's just a design review stage on this one, Sandra.
Okay, sorry, I'm getting confused again.
It's easy to do.
They're all connected anyway.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? Jim, can you call the roll?
Mr. Hamel.
Could you say what the motion again, is again, please?
Ms. Collier moved to find out the engineer's cost to review the design review plan and bill the applicant prior to having the review done.
Okay, that, that was, I faded away.
Seconded by Edwin, Mr. Kronlick. Are you ready for the vote?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Hamel.
Abstain.
Ms. Estabrook.
Nay.
Ms. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Foote. Mr. White.
Aye.
Mr. Andrews.
Aye.
Mr. Kronlick.
Aye.
That does pass. Just so I know how to interpret it, I assume that once I receive the engineer cost, I send it to the applicant, and however, the work is not done until I have the check.
Correct.
Okay, we're all set on that one? Next item is the NEPR manifest?
The motion, we accept the manifest, or pay the manifest, accept it, what do we do? What?
You, you approve to pay.
Approve to pay the manifest as presented.
For $584.17.
Correct.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any comments? If not, call the roll, please.
Mr. Hamel.
Aye.
Ms. Estabrook.
Aye.
Ms. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Foote.
Aye.
Mr. White.
Aye.
Mr. Andrews.
Aye.
Mr. Kronlick.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, if I may explain, just, if I may have a second. You saw on the manifest that I sent out, there were two things that said mixed. One was for $2.20, and one was for $10.44. There were, I took four notices of decision to the registry. Each required a 55-cent stamp to have the registry send it back once it, it had been recorded. Rather than put down four lines of 55 cents, I lumped them in because I went to the post office and bought four stamps, so I had one receipt. Each one of those lines is represented by a request for payment that goes to the appropriate, either the town treasurer or the town bookkeeper. And threatening them with more and more paperwork, that, that page would have been twice as long, because it would Because it would have been six additional listings. Saying that Russell was charged 55 cents worth of postage. Somebody had asked that question, so I figured I would give the explanation.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item is the acceptance of minutes for July 28th. Can I have a motion?
Go move. Just Mike.
Second.
I'll second it, Edwin.
Yeah, yeah, Ms. Collier. Beat you.
Okay, uh, any comments on the minutes?
Yes, I do. This is Annie. On page four, the eighth paragraph, my name is misspelled. It has Y in it, not an I. On page. Page eight. No, I'm sorry, page nine. It says a life safely and all other inspections, it should be safety. Very minor in 11 pages or whatever this is, I mean, my compliments.
Quite honestly, those are typos and I apologize for your name. This computer keeps auto correcting. The Y to an I.
I think you need to teach it a lesson.
I, I, I've, I've added it to the, to the dictionary. Every now and then it changes the I, the Y to an I. I. And quite honestly, when I'm going through and proofreading 11 pages. I do not double check necessarily every spelling.
No, and I don't blame you. So that's why, that's why we're here. I'd also, one other question on number seven. No, after number seven, on page nine, where we're discussing the Miola application. There's, was there no app, was there no motion to accept jurisdiction?
Nope.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I, I listened to the tape four times. And it was, jurisdiction was never taken.
So Jen, my question is, do we have a problem with that? Is there any legal issue with that or are we okay?
Um, given that you ultimately approved it. Someone could technically probably do an administrative appeal. I don't think that they would be successful because you have, you approved it. I suppose there's a nuance that yes, potentially there's a problem. You could do a retroactive vote that you did accept jurisdiction. Tonight, if you wanted to. And to amend the minutes as such.
I'd like to make that motion, please. Oh, but we have a motion on the table for the minutes, so.
Well, and the motion for the minutes is as, as corrected.
Right.
Yeah.
You could add a secretary's note effectively that the planning board at tonight's meeting voted to amend. Your previous meeting minutes to indicate that jurisdiction was not taken, but the intent of the board was to take jurisdiction.
Oh, we need to vote inside of a vote here.
Yeah.
That sounds perfectly worded. I'll, I'll add that motion.
Can I make a suggestion? The two. Misspellings are typos. Those don't need to be specifically corrected in the minutes. I will just go back and correct. You know, the fact that I have typos. The. Taking jurisdiction. I'm. Jen can answer this, but I'm not certain that we have the ability. To say that we did something that, or you, that you did something that you did not do.
No, it's a.
I believe the motion, the way that Jen had framed it was that our intent was to take jurisdiction, although we did, we failed to do so.
Okay. I apologize, I'm trying to write the minutes and you, people sometimes keep talking.
Jim, multitask.
Use a computer, it'll spell check it for you.
I know.
Yeah, right. Jen, could you restate your, your suggestion?
I will try.
Listen to the tape.
My recommendation is that you can make a vote. This evening on your meeting minutes to amend the meeting minutes of the last meeting. With a note, it can be a secretary note. That the intent of the planning board was to accept jurisdiction of the application.
Don't move.
I'd second it, but.
Okay.
I, I got the overriding motion here, so.
That's good. We're, we're, so.
I think that takes.
Are, are you set yet?
One moment.
Uh huh. We'll wait for.
Okay.
So now, we're, what are we voting on?
Well, we're voting on my motion.
I want Jim to tell us.
Okay, the first thing you have to do is vote to amend the minutes. Then you can vote to accept the minutes. You cannot.
Right. So, so we're voting to amend the minutes to add in that secretary's note, correct?
Yes, but.
And we're not going to do any typos.
Right.
Right.
Okay, so call the roll, call the roll on that.
Uh, first I need to know who moved it.
Annie.
I did, Annie.
Okay, and it was seconded by?
Mike.
Mike.
Okay, Mr. Hamel.
Aye.
Ms. Estabrook.
Aye.
Ms. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Foote.
Aye.
Mr. White.
Aye.
Mr. Andrews.
Aye.
Mr. Cromlich.
Aye.
That is unanimous.
And now we're voting on accepting the minutes?
Accepting the minutes as amended.
Correct. We're ready to go.
Mr. Hamel.
Aye.
Ms. Estabrook.
Aye.
Ms. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. White.
Aye.
Mr. Andrews.
Aye.
Mr. Cromlich.
Aye.
Mr. Foote.
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Next, next item is correspondence and the first thing is, there's a. DOT Public Information Meeting on Thursday about the proposals to. Do Rhodes Corner. And the information on how to. Log in or in, in your package. Do we have any other correspondence, Jim?
Not at this time.
Now, Mr. Foote, you wanted to bring up. An, an issue about ongoing meetings.
Well, I, I wanted to take a poll from the, from you guys, the board. On if you're willing and ready to go meet live again. We can bring it to the select board at tomorrow night's meetings.
Well, I mean, when, when we were talking about this several months ago. It sounded like you, I believe it was you, who did some measuring in Town Hall.
Correct.
Came up with a. Capacity number for Town Hall.
Correct.
Which was relatively a low number. I forget what it was.
It's like 25, I believe, residents.
Right, and, and I mean, tonight's meeting, we had over 30 people attending. So if, if we meet in Town Hall, we're going to have to limit the public. I think even though it's cumbersome to meet on Zoom. At least everybody has an opportunity to participate. If we, if we meet at Town Hall, we're going to have capacity problems. So I don't think. Go ahead.
So we're not gonna, we're, we're not gonna plan on having a meeting for the next eight months because this is how long this is going to go on for, number one. Number two, we are not going anywhere with these meetings. We're continuing everything and we're spinning our wheels and we're looking like a bunch of, you know, what's to the residents. That's all I'm gonna say.
I think, I think we're making very good progress.
No, we continue everything, Roger. Everything gets continued with this board.
Well, Larry, this is a. But in here, if the applicants would. Put in their applications what are requested. And not just keep sliding things through, they wouldn't be continued. And we had two applicants that just did that blatantly.
Correct, but there's so much miscommunication between residents and, and all boards, not just the planning board. That maybe when they come for an application, they don't understand that we need to explain it more. We, we need to look at the whole process. I mean, I want to get the rest of the board's opinions. Do we continue a lot of stuff that. Is frustrating as a board member that we're, we're not moving forward?
I agree with you that, I think that maybe we could get a better packet together. That really explains to the applicant, particularly an applicant that doesn't have an engineer. The ones with the engineers have no excuse as far as I'm concerned. But the ones that don't have an engineer make it very clear what we expect from them, at least from the basics. And I think that would help move these things along much faster.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Jim.
Of the applications that we've, that the planning board has recently done. I have worked, I cannot. Tell somebody how to fill out the application, that is actually, that would be illegal. However, I do work very closely with the people that apply. And it's, you know, they, they say, well, what kind of map do they need? And I suggest, you know, there are several different ways you can. Get your. Assessment card, you can print it out, you know, that gives you a floor plan. You know, I tell people how, what, what the resources are. I work very closely with a lot of these people and. Quite honestly, they are more likely to get the, the stuff in sometimes than people with engineers. Now, if, if you notice that at the last. Meeting, you had Bajal, Summers. Sadat. And I'm sorry that the fourth person. Those were, you opened the public hearing, you listened to, you took jurisdiction. And you came to a conclusion. Those were all people that I worked with. The ones that are continued are the ones usually with the engineer. Because they don't. You know. Their engineers are professionals. I, I, I make no recommendations. I offer no. Ideas to them because that would be, you know. Inappropriate, but for the average small, you know, small applicant. I, I, I do nothing to actually create their. Application. I simply, when they say, what do they mean by a map? I look at them and say, take a piece of paper, a pencil and a ruler. And draw out what you want, your idea.
So building on both that and what Mike was saying. If we were to put those things in writing as guidelines for an application. That might be helpful to some people because some people don't take in information verbally. There are lots of different ways of learning and taking information and maybe. Sims helping people with, you know, specific ideas verbally is one way, but maybe we have a piece of paper that is online that. Also says, here's commonly asked questions and come up with a series of facts. Of how people can maybe get their job done a little bit.
I actually suggested that when I was hired back in January, that that is on my list of things to do. And then COVID came along and. You know, when you've got 16 hours a week, the. The, what would be nice to do list has been supplanted by also when you've got. You know, at one point we had 10 applications in front of us. As thing, as. Time loosens up. Then it may be more, you know, then I would have a chance to put together. We've had. Some recommended changes to the actual applications. That we divided instead of having one grand application. That we have individual applications for site plan, for. Minor site plan, for home based business. Those are things that COVID put on hold. And when you consider the fact that it's, you know, it's now. 10 minutes, you know, five minutes past 10. Actually, it's almost 10 minutes past 10, you know. These meetings are taking much longer than was originally scheduled for. And, you know, there's a limit. You saw evidence of it yesterday when I sent out the email with the manifest. I still have to finish preparing the manifest to get it to the town treasurer. But if, at quarter past five last night. You know, my eight and a half, eight hour 15 minute day was basically done. I reached a point where I could stop. I now have to get that stuff into here by tomorrow.
Let's stay with what.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I digressed.
So I have a suggestion. There are a lot of people on the planning board who have listened to a lot of applications over the years. Jim is not the only one. And why doesn't everybody start to develop a list of commonly asked questions? And we can kind of put them together and see if we can't, all of us together come up with a facts thing. Instead of having it be something Jim has to do in his 16 hours.
Roger, this is Barbara. May I say something?
Sure.
Okay. I have access to applications that another town uses. That may be a good starting point to embellish on instead of going from scratch. And I would be happy to supply them to the board so that we could go from there.
Fabulous.
Hi, this is Sandra. Can I say something? We have this land use application form that comes in all the time. How many times have we had it when they hardly fill it out at all? I think one time last week, we had one that was very professionally typed and everything was answered. So here we're providing a document and the person doesn't even take time to fill it out. And we're going to just find more documents and they're not going to fill those out either. And then like Jim said about his, he said something about a map. I think I remember. The other meeting about one of the accessory dwelling apartments. That they said, well, you know, he told me that's all I had to do. So the public has to know that, you know, Jim is just suggesting things and that possibly the board, you know, would need something else. That whatever he says is concrete.
If, if I may, the gentleman with the apartment is another, is one of those people, if you look at the application. That you received from him, you have two. Pencil drawings.
Right.
He looked at me and said, oh, I have to have the, an architect draw a floor plan. I said, no, you need to take a piece of paper and pencil. And draw your floor, you know.
Right, but then I think during discussion, we wanted like more plans than what he did draw.
Right. He came back, he came back with the drawings of. He came back with drawings of the outside of the house, not with a floor plan.
Right, exactly.
As, as I would do for any applicant, I actually looked at him and said, excuse me, where's your floor, where's your floor plan?
Right.
I think Barbara's idea is a really good one.
The, the, the subject is. Larry was asking if the board wanted to. To the select one, if we wanted to meet in person. And where, I don't think, he didn't make a motion, but he, he, he raised that question. I think we should stay on that question. Does anybody else have any comments on that question?
This is Edwin, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
A motion to go to the board of selectmen to set up us meeting in person instead of on Zoom. Check it.
Get any more conversation on that?
Yeah, I got off track. If we're talking about meeting at the Town Hall, someone said that you, the governor is saying you can have 100 people, but then we're limited by this, how big our Town Hall is, correct?
Correct.
You're, you're limited to 49 people anyway, with, with no COVID-19. Without a fire watch, so with COVID-19, he says, stated today, you can have up to 100 people inside a building. Honestly, we're not gonna have 100 people inside. 90% of our meetings are probably gonna be under 25. And, and we can, we can work it out, if it gets out of hand, we can always stop, but we need to try to go back to normal, normal meetings.
Our, our attendance at the Zoom meet, when, when you've got 125 development projects, you're getting a lot of butters coming and, and the attendance has been much more than 25, they've been 30 to 40. I think one of them was even like 45 people, so there isn't gonna be enough room in Town Hall.
I'd like to say something, my understanding what the governor said was he finally actually made a mask mandate, but the mask mandate was any gatherings over 100 people. It didn't refer to being inside, it was over 100 people. And as to us having in-person meetings, you know, for me, this is one of those, just because we can doesn't mean we should, I've had COVID, I probably am immune, I don't want you guys to get it, it's nasty. And I think rushing to have these meetings in person because we think we might be able to move them along faster is, is just a, a chance that I don't think it's worth it right now.
This is Annie, I have to agree with that, I know that in our school district, the vote was to stay remote for the time being and to see how things develop as people start to get together, let other people be the guinea pigs. 50% of our teachers are 50 years older, 50 years and older, and they were, many were very unwilling coming back and expose themselves. Many of our butters for particularly the 125 with the number of people who were in Sergeant Woods, who, who come to these meetings are, would potentially be exposed, I don't think it's a worthwhile thing at this time when there's so many unknowns, it seems to me we ought to wait a while.
I, I really think that these Zoom meetings are working relatively well.
I do, too.
Any other comments from the board? You ready to vote?
Yep.
Jim, call the roll.
Mr. Hamel.
Oh.
Can you repeat the question?
Mr. Cromlich moved to have meetings in person and to request that of the selectmen. Ms. Estabrook.
No.
Ms. Collier.
No.
Mr. Foot.
Yes.
Mr. White.
No.
Mr. Andrews.
No.
Mr. Cromlich.
Yes.
Five to two, it fails.
Okay, so, so we will continue to meet in, on Zoom for the, for the time being. Any other items for the, for us to consider tonight?
Can we adjourn?
Just one, one, one question after that vote.
Yes.
So that we do not get the same argument as the, we received this evening because the a butter notices go out as if we're meeting in person and then they have to look on the website, would the board like me to start until the board changes its vote? Have the butter notices point to a Zoom meeting versus a live meeting?
Yes.
Yes, I think that would be simpler.
Okay.
Yes. Because are, are we now sure that we will continue to use the same Zoom account going forward?
Unless the town is, unless the planning board wishes to purchase its own. The, the town's paid account.
This, this, this seems to be working fine, that, that we could, we can share that account and we're, we're saving the town $15 a month. Okay, yeah, good. The motion, Annie, was that just instruction?
Well, I think, it was, it was a request, I think you could do it.
Yeah, fine.
That was just for my information, no, no motion is necessary on that.
Right. Anything else?
Is the chair gonna call, is it adjourned?
The meeting is adjourned at 10:20.
Thank you everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.
Okay, everybody, I'm closing down.